Good morning, everybody. Aloha, kakahiaka, kakao. Welcome to our Maui Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, October 22, 2024. Director, roll call, please. Commissioner Dikos.
Good morning, Commissioners and Planning Department. I am alone.
All right, hold on a second. One second, we have a sound issue. Hang on. Commissioner Dikos, can you speak again and just see?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Nope.
No.
So we've got a small issue that we're resolving. I may ask you to speak from time to time.
Test.
For speaker.
Test. Test.
It's all right, I'll prompt you, Commissioner Dikos. You can keep saying it, it's funny, but you don't have to.
Independent nomination. Independent nomination. It's in the charter.
Item, looking at their agenda. Item that's looking at all the people who are turning off. So they can send them letters. Like to do it again.
I think that might.
There could be a reason.
They're drafting the letter. Drop off some culolos here.
Commissioner Dikos, can you speak now?
Yeah, test.
There we go. All right, let's try this again.
Commissioner Dikos.
Good morning, Commissioners and Planning Department. I am alone in my office in Napili. My wife may occasionally enter the room.
Thank you. Commissioner Ward. Commissioner Lindsay.
My kakao, nice to see you all here today live. And you too online, Commissioner Dikos.
Vice Chair Thompson.
Aloha, good morning, all.
Chair Thayer.
Yes, good morning, everybody.
Commissioners Ke'aloa and Hipo Lido are dismissed.
Okay, so on our agenda today, we have two public hearing items and two communication items. The first is a bed and breakfast home permit application in Kihei. And the second one is a West Maui Community Plan Amendment. We understand that there may be some people here from Lahaina and/or waiting online. So one idea that's been floated is to move this item to the top of the agenda in honor or to respect everyone's time who's come from the other side. But that would be with the agreement of all the Commissioners. And if everybody is ready to go on that, yeah? Okay, so if there's no objections, we'll switch the order of B1 and B2, such that item B2 will come first. Yes. Okay, we need to formalize that. So we're doing B2 first.
But just note that if there's no objections, then you have moved B2 to ahead of B1, and you'll be taking that matter now. And you heard no objections, so that's basically unanimous consent. So you can proceed with the public hearing on item B2.
Okay, yes, please go ahead.
Yeah, so Kate Bystone, Planning Director, referring to the Planning Commission and the proposed bill to amend the West Maui Community Plan Ordinance 5334-2021 relating to the area between Front Street and Honoa P'ilani Highway from Kahoma Stream to Kenui Street, Lahaina, Maui, Hawaii. ZPA 2024-00002. And Jackie Takakura is the planner for this project.
Good morning, I'm going to share my screen. Okay, thank you for your patience, everyone. Okay, good morning, Chair Thayer, Vice Chair Thompson, and Commissioners. The Department of Planning, oops, excuse me, sorry. The Department is proposing a community plan amendment to revise the West Maui Community Plan relating to the area Mauga of Front Street, Makai of Honoa P'ilani Highway, between Kahoma Stream and Kenui Street. This bill is really short. It only proposes to revise one page of the community plan. And this is to remove details about placement of dwelling units and park space requirements. The proposed amendment and a map of the subject area are attached to the memo report. And the sole purpose of this community plan amendment is to allow residential units to be rebuilt after the August 8, 2023 fire, so people can get back into their homes. The area is about 21 acres and includes Kahoma Village, which was developed as a 203-unit affordable housing project under HRS 201H. And the Maui Planning Commission approved the project's Special Management Area Permit, the SM1, in 2014. The neighborhood includes 17 multifamily workforce buildings, which includes six units each, and the rest are single-family homes. This is a timeline of events. So as I mentioned, the SMA was approved by the Maui Planning Commission back in 2014. Occupancy of the units began in around 2019. In 2021, the Hawaii State Supreme Court determined that the project must have compliance with HRS 205A. And that's the CZM or Coastal Zone Management, Special Management Area Guidelines. And one of those requirements is that the development must be consistent with the county general plan, community plans, and zoning. So the court decision requires the Commission, Maui Planning Commission, to make findings on the project's consistency with the West Maui Community Plan. Now, the West Maui Community Plan, approved by the County Council in December 2021, includes specific requirements for a six-acre park, along with other policies and objectives for this area, even though they were not included in the completed development. For those Commissioners who were here a couple years ago and reviewed the West Maui Community Plan, these specific requirements were not in the recommendation the Commission transmitted to the County Council. They were added by the Council later. In case you're wondering, like, I don't remember that. Continuing with the timeline of events. On August 8 last year, the fire entered Kahoma Village in the southeast corner, completely destroying Lot 4, which is a single-family home, and pushed into the center of the development, completely destroying multifamily buildings, 11, 12, 14, and 15. The other buildings were spared and are currently occupied. Fast forward to today. Earlier this month, Governor Green issued his 18th proclamation, emergency proclamation relating to wildfires, which suspends HRS Chapter 205A, the Coastal Zone Management Rules, to the extent necessary to respond to the emergency, including the reconstruction of previously existing multifamily residences that were destroyed in the Lahaina wildfire, provided the reconstruction does not change the structure's previous footprint and/or overall dimensions. The Governor's 18th proclamation allows the Planning Director to temporarily waive the requirements for an SMA permit. But this is only temporary. The community plan amendment is still needed. So the Department, working with Corporation Council and members of the community, is here now, asking you to recommend approval to amend the West Maui Community Plan to establish consistency regarding parkland and the other requirements near Kahoma Village. Once the community plan is updated, SMA permit will come back to you so that you may find consistency as required by the court. Here's the project's status at this time. Building permits have been approved based on Governor Green's emergency proclamation, and they've taken other steps to try to get started. And beyond that, the next steps are to approve this community plan amendment, ensure the SMA permit is consistent with the community plan. There's a settlement that's in the works. It's not part of the Commission. And they're working on locations for parks and public facilities. So the Department respectfully requests the Commission recommend approval of this amendment. So this would go from the Maui Planning Commission to the County Council, and then the plan would be updated if it's ultimately approved. And we will transmit the Maui Planning Commission's recommendations to the Maui County Council as soon as possible, which would be probably next week, as soon as the summary minutes are available, so that we don't delay this, so we can get people back into their homes. So that's the presentation. I can answer any clarifying questions if you want. And I'll stop sharing, but I can always pull up something, any of the slides if you need to.
Commissioners, any clarifying questions at this point? Otherwise, we will go to public testimony. Okay, seeing none, let's go to public testimony. Okay, it looks like we have one person signed up to testify in person. We are checking for the online list, but for now, we can get started. The person here is Lauren Cunningham.
Chair Thayer, Vice Chair Thompson, esteemed Commissioners. My name is Lauren. I'm also the vice president of the Department. Asked to speak on behalf of our communities and the citizens who have been thwarted, it submitted a written testimony to you ahead of today. So I'm going to talk fast because there's a lot to. At the time, the State Supreme Court made the decision in early 2021, they indicated there was a clear path and wanting to direct the SMA updating the West Maui Community Plan to align with what had already been built in Kahoma Village. And so I think it's important to ground the discussion that might happen here today with the fact that the court did that because our homes were built using plans that had already passed this freezing fusion and then passed the freeze freeze. Built with valid permits issued by the planning department and then sold to us.
Oh, sorry, one second. Commissioner Dikos said it's hard to hear you online.
Yeah, you've got to eat.
Yeah.
Get real close to your face.
Yeah, like a DJ.
Love on it.
Yes, like a rock concert.
Yeah.
Yes, please, can we restart her time? Yeah. Yeah.
Aloha, Chair Thayer, Vice Chair Thompson.
Oh, hold on, still not yet. Oh, it might not be on.
I'll check. No, no, that's your fault.
I can hear it, but it's very, very faint.
Say that again, Commissioner Dikos.
I can hear, but it's very, very faint.
Might be better.
That's good.
It is better.
Yeah, perfect.
All right, is that better?
Excellent.
Thank you. All right, I will restart. Aloha, Chair Thayer, Vice Chair Thompson, and esteemed Commissioners. My name is Lauren Cunningham. Our home is in Kahoma Village. I'm also the vice president of our AOUO and was asked to speak on behalf of our community and almost 40 owners in our community that submitted their written testimony to you ahead of today. So I'm going to talk fast because there's a lot to cover. At the time, the State Supreme Court made their decision in early 2021, they indicated that there was a clear path for the county to correct the SMA by updating the West Maui Community Plan to align with what had already been built in Kahoma Village. And so I think it's important to ground any discussion that might happen here today with the fact that the court did that because our homes were built using plans that had already passed this decision. And then passed the County Council, built with valid permits issued by the County Planning Department, and then sold to us, clearing title transfer, including many through the county's own workforce housing program, all before the court invalidated the SMA. But rather than the correction that the court indicated, the 2022 Maui Community Plan, West Maui Community Plan, was instead enacted with what wasn't built in Kahoma Village, despite warnings at the time of what that might mean for owners. So when the worst happened on August 8, that decision back in 2021 has proved to be devastating to our community. In the aftermath of the fire, our little team of volunteers worked nonstop to accomplish everything from emergency stabilization of infrastructure and utilities to debris removal while we had many occupied homes immediately adjacent. When the county opened the fast track permitting for rebuilds through foreleaf, we had every plan, permit, study, and piece of supporting documentation ready to go, and we were the first multifamily project to complete the application process. And then our application sat. From May to October, we fought with all of our aloha and a huge investment of resources and time to get to the point where we had a path to get started on our rebuild and to bring our neighbors home, which brings us here to today and this amendment before you. I want to help you understand that by leaving this situation uncorrected in 2022, it already means nearly six extra months that we had to slow our rebuild and that the ahana of our destroyed homes won't be able to come home. Six extra months that they will pay enormous rents on top of trying to keep up with their mortgages and fees. Six extra months and more anxiety and emotional turmoil than I can adequately express for all of our Kahoma Village homeowners. And six extra months that our neighborhood still won't be whole. Sorry. So on behalf of our board and our ahana, we ask you. Yeah. Please do not leave us in this limbo through no fault of our own.
30 seconds.
Please write this wrong with urgency and with expediency and with clarity of purpose, so that when our 25 owners of destroyed homes finally are able to come home, that it's with clear title and the knowledge that this can never happen again. We ask you to use your advocacy to recommend to the County Council that they do the same. Mahalo for your time and especially for your service to our community. About Green, our association president and I are here and happy to take any questions that he might have. And aloha to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for listening.
Any questions for the testifiers? Seeing none. Is there anybody online?
There's no one online yet, so if.
Okay.
Call for that.
I guess the last call for testimony on this item. If you're online and wish to testify, please indicate yourself to staff in the chat. Otherwise, going once, going twice.
There's one more, Chair.
One person? Okay.
Yeah, Day Gekko, just raise his hand.
Okay. Day Gekko, please go ahead.
Aloha, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
This is Johann Lal. I'm testifying on behalf of myself. I just want to suggest to you guys on the Planning Commission to make sure you have as much information as possible from the Planning Department and from Corp Counsel. At a previous meeting, you guys were reviewing something kind of similar where you were amending the zoning conditions for Walia 670. And the major part of contention was 450 affordable units. Remember? The Planning Department didn't give you the full story. You weren't told about the lawsuit that may have gotten those built. And they are treated as like a formality. And so if there is like alternate methods to achieve rebuilding in this case without changing the community plan, make sure you actually know all the options, all the impacts, what's going to happen down the line. So that's my suggestion. Mahalo.
Any questions for the testifier? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony. Is there anybody else online who wishes to testify?
There's no one else, Chair, thank you.
Okay, closing testimony in three, two, one. Okay, testimony is closed. Commissioners, do you have any other questions to ask of the Department? Commissioner Lindsay.
As I was reading this the other night, I was thinking, like, changing the community, because we're working on the South Maui Community Plan, changing something at that community plan level. Like, what is the purpose of that in this case? Because if this was like the most, one of the more recent updated plans, like, why was this not a consideration then?
Thank you, Commissioner Lindsay. Two things. One is that special management area major permits must be consistent with the community plans. And so that's where this comes in. Regarding this part of the West Maui Community Plan, this was actually not included in the West Maui Community Plan that had been reviewed by the Advisory Committee and by the Maui Planning Commission. It was added later in the process. I was not around in long range at the time, so I cannot explain why it was added back or added into the plan. But because it's there and because of the requirement that the SMA major must be consistent, that has caused a problem at this time. I'm not sure if the Director wants to chime in a little bit more on that. Thank you.
So everything that Jackie mentioned is true. I think we were all a little surprised as a part of the team that worked on the West Maui Community Plan. At no point did this really come up during that process. It didn't come up at Planning Commission, and then it came up at Council. I think the intent was to force Kahoma Village to do the things that are listed in this after the fact, and it just, it didn't happen. And the unfortunate result is that this major fire happened, and it's preventing them from rebuilding. We think the solution that we're proposing here after consulting with legal and with the community is the best possible solution. It's really important when you're doing the South Maui Community Plan, when you're doing any community plan, to be really thoughtful. And this was added in a way that wasn't necessarily thoughtful. And so now we're having to fix it. So that's all I want to add to this. I think this is the right path forward for this community if the Commission's intention is to allow these homes to rebuild.
The question isn't not that we want to allow them to be rebuilt. It's just the process. Like, looking at it like a blank slate now. And that was the community's intention at the time. Now that this blank slate is here, I am not saying that I don't want people to move in. I want people to live in their homes. I think that is so important. But the process, now that we have this blank slate and the community spoke about this most recently. So taking like that into consideration is the process that we are going through with South Maui Community Plan, like, is this the right process? That's just something that I'm going through in my head. But also, having it added later makes a lot more sense now. So thank you for that.
Chair Thayer, if I may just add, this one is very unique because of that Supreme Court ruling. So this is kind of very unusual. So I just want to add that, that it's weird, different.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the Commission? Okay, seeing none. I guess we can have the recommendation from the Department.
Thank you, Chair. The Department is requesting that the Maui Planning Commission recommends approval to the Maui County Council.
Thank you. Commissioner Ward?
So moved.
So moved? Okay. We have a second from Vice Chair Thompson. Would you like to speak to the motion?
I just feel that it's important that if an error occurred through a process not directly related to these individuals, that we as a community have a responsibility to address that and course correct and put these people back in their homes.
Thank you. Vice Chair?
Yeah, thank you, and well said. I think it should be for us, keep our eyes open because we have the South Maui Community Plan for the very same things, a lot of it. And yeah, last week, weren't we tripped up by one up country because of the water? Remember, they ran one, even though it wasn't taking water. Same now, it's going to have to have one of these bills to get watered through. So anyway, yeah, I feel for the people in their homes, and they should be able to get back in. This is all from lawsuits and other stuff unrelated to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Commissioners? No? Okay. Yeah, I just feel terrible that it's taken this long and it's come to this point that we're here. But I concur with you, Vice Chair Thompson, that this is a tough lesson learned and that we all need to be diligent as we review all the community plans, especially South Maui, which we are in the middle of right now. So there being no further discussion or deliberation, we can call for the vote. Commissioner Dikos.
Aye.
Commissioner Ward.
Aye.
Commissioner Lindsay.
Aye.
Vice Chair Thompson.
Aye.
Chair Thayer.
Aye.
That's five votes. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
And just a reminder, Commissioners, at some point, the Special Management Area Permit will come back to you for consistency. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Drive safe.
Thank you for being here. Okay, now we will move to item B1. Director, please read us into the record.
I lost it. Computer technology failed me, I apologize. Ms. Netra Halperin of Opulent Design on behalf of Mr. Zachary Bernstein, requesting a bed and breakfast home permit for the Halama Dolphin Villa B&amp;B, a four-bedroom dwelling on approximately 0.46 acres of land and district located at 1676 Halama Street in Kihei, Maui, Hawaii, in the state urban and county, state urban and county R3 residential district tax map key 239011009, B&amp;B 2022-0003. Tara Furukawa is our planner for this project.
Good morning, Commissioners. The applicant, Zachary Bernstein, is proposing a four-bedroom B&amp;B in one dwelling. There are two dwellings on site, and the applicant lives in one of them. The property is under the ownership of the Richard Bernstein Trust, and Richard is the applicant's father. Zachary is the trustee. The Maui Planning Commission is the approving authority for the B&amp;B permit because there are at least two permitted B&amp;Bs within 500 feet from the lot on which it's proposed.
Thank you, Tara. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for your service. Before I talk about this application, I do want to give a preamble. Yesterday, our planner kindly informed us that there was going to be two Commissioners with excused absences. And then also, I noticed that there are two vacancies. So the intent of having five Commissioners having to approve something is with nine Commissioners. Then it's a majority. But with four Commissioners gone, then it needs to be unanimous. And that does not feel fair. And we wanted to postpone, but the Department would not allow us. So here we are. So anyway, but so thank you for listening to us. Okay, so this property is not at all detracting from the long-term rental market. First of all, the elder Bernstein, Richard Bernstein, he lives in the front house, the house on the ocean, and he's only there half the year. So there's no way that it could be rented long-term. Also, it's oceanfront on Halama Street. There's no way that the price is going to be affordable to residents. That's something that only a tourist could afford. And you rent it $30,000 a month, nobody here is going to pay that. So that, if it were not rented out, it would just sit empty half the year, which is, you know, what it does now. So this property is not, this B&amp;B will not affect the character of the neighborhood. It's got, uh, walls on, um, all sides, well, except the ocean, of course. Um, and then there's two gates. There's a gate at the front, there's a gate between the two, um, houses. Um, on the south side, there's a beach access going, uh, between the property and the neighbor to the south. And, um, and then on the north, there's a sound barrier wall and lots of landscaping. So it does not affect, um, that, that property. They can't hear or see anything. Um, and they do have a very good, uh, relationship with that neighbor. Um, and then as you, as Tara mentioned, um, Zach, the son, lives in the second home. He lives there full-time. And so he would be the one, um, managing the B&amp;B, interacting with the guests, et cetera. Um, there's tons of parking on the property, so there's no issue about parking. Um, and this property was a B&amp;B when, uh, the Bernsteins purchased. So it's set up to be, uh, like a little mini resort. It is set up for that, uh, purpose. Um, the benefits to Maui County. So it would bring in approximately 60,000 in taxes every year, G E T and T H T. And part of that goes to the county now. Um, and it's set up for large family gatherings. So that's something that people can't as easily get, um, at the hotels. And, um, that is a benefit to tourism. Um, and of course, as with all B&amp;Bs, the guests would spend money at local restaurants, catering companies, um, activities. And then the B&amp;B high, would hire, uh, cleaners, landscapers, pool maintenance people, et cetera. All local people needing jobs. Um, and, uh, these are affluent tourists because the price of entry is going to be steep. Um, so they're going to spend more than the average tourist. And I know that is, I've heard one of the goals of Maui County is to get higher spending tourists, so less impact. Um, and so this is basically a model B&amp;B. And so it's a win-win for the client and for the county.
Any questions? Uh, Commissioners, any questions at this point? Clarifying, we'll have, um, questions again after testimony. But go ahead. Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Ward, followed by Commissioner Decosse.
Thank you, Chair. Could you give an approximate number of homes that are within kind of that block radius?
Um, let's see, I did send a mail out, um, but I don't, at the top of my head, uh.
Just a ballpark.
Couple hundred, I don't know. I mean, it's, it's, the, the, the lots on the ocean side are half acre. And then on the other side, they're, I think, quarter acre. So, and then, of course, one side is ocean, so that block, there's nobody there. But, and then the other thing is, is that the ocean has, creates ambient sound. So any mumblings or just small sounds are going to be not heard because of the ocean. And, um, I used to live across the street and I never heard anything. And there wasn't a B&amp;B there, but I just didn't hear them doing whatever, anything.
Thank you. And, uh, thank you for your testimony. So if there's approximately about 100 homes, this would be the fourth, if I'm correct. Uh, it would be a third B&amp;B, fourth is a short-term home rental. And then I believe there's two other B&amp;Bs slightly outside the 500 feet.
I didn't see slightly outside. Oh, Tara's giving me. Okay, so, um, there is, oh, the pending is the one. Okay, so there's one approved, short-term rental, and there's two approved bed and breakfasts. The other ones are on the, you know, way on the other side of Waileka House Street. So they're, they're pretty far away. You, you couldn't hear anything between them.
Thank you.
I just want to clarify something you just said. I heard you say you lived across the street and there wasn't a B&amp;B there before?
There was before I lived there. I lived there for, I think, two, two years. And before that, there was a B&amp;B there. But then, um, the Bernsteins had already purchased when I moved there.
Okay, but I thought I heard you say it was a B&amp;B already when they purchased the house?
It, yeah, but that was before my time. Did you want to respond to that?
Oh, um, yeah, he'll need to come up.
It was the Halama, it was Dolphin, Dolphin Villa, it's pretty, pretty much the same name.
So when you lived there, it was not a B&amp;B? And later on, when they purchased it, it was a B&amp;B?
No, no, no. When I lived there, it was, it was not a B&amp;B because the Bernsteins had already purchased it and they were just using it as a home. And then they decided to get a B&amp;B.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other clarifying questions from the Commission? Oh, Commissioner Decosse, sorry.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for your testimony today. Uh, you mentioned, um, it sits half the year. I'm just wondering who lives in it the other half of the year?
Um, the elder, uh, Bernstein. So it's the father and son live on the property. So the son lives in the house along Halama Street full-time and the father lives in the B&amp;B home half the year and it sits empty when he's not there.
Okay, so the, what does the father do once it becomes a B&amp;B?
He'll do the same. They'll just rent it out. With a B&amp;B, you can rent it out, schedule it for those times when he's not there. So he'll just schedule it for the time, he'll open up the calendar when he's out of town.
Got it. Um, the, that, so the owner's home, how, what's the proximity to the B&amp;B? How, how close are those together?
Well, they're on the same property, I don't know, how many, 50 feet, 100 feet? Right, there's, yeah, there's a gate in between with, I mean, a wall in between with the gate. So they're, they're definitely separate. But that's all the owner and the guests or owner and owner depending time of year.
Okay, so it's on the same property, but there's a dividing wall and separate entrance, uh, driveways?
No, no, you come into the driveway and then immediately on your left is the, the second house. And then there's a wall with a gate going to the B&amp;B house.
Okay.
What are you, uh, wondering?
And I'm just, you know, B&amp;Bs are very different from TBRs if the owner is onsite, able to watch, uh, and oversee everything. So I'm just, it sounds like there's no management agency, that the owner is managing the property?
Here.
Oh, this way.
We need to get her a microphone. I'm sorry, you're gonna need to have a microphone in your hand or Tara, perhaps you can hold the microphone for her while she talks.
That's okay, I, I, that's okay on the.
Thank you. I don't know if you can see this, I'm trying to get it. Anyway, it's. Yeah, this is.
Um, this is.
It's the same property, it's a half-acre property and he's, he's gonna hear. Do you, do you hear stuff from the main house sometimes?
Um, if, sorry, um, Ms. Halperin, if, if, if the applicants wish to talk, they'll have to talk into the mic so that we can get everything on record. Um, but Commissioner Decosse, in our applicant, in the documents we got in all the packet of exhibits, there's an aerial photograph that is Exhibit 2. And then there's the, like, site plans. Uh, the site plan is Exhibit 3. And you can see the layout of the houses, the structures on the property.
It, it's definitely right there.
Yeah, no, I see it. Uh, my, my other question was just, you, it sounds like there's no management agency. The owner is overseeing the, the B&amp;B and will be managing it from the next door property.
Yes, Zach Bernstein, who is here, if you want to speak to him, uh, directly, um, will be right there, uh, as he lives there full-time. And he will be greeting the guests when they come and, uh, addressing any concerns, probably giving, you know, which restaurants to go to, um, making sure they understand that this is a residential neighborhood. And, you know, so the same way they would treat their own neighbors. And so, yes, he's right there, um, monitoring and managing things.
Great, great, thank you, thank you, Chair.
Sure. Um, any other clarifying questions? If we go to testimony, Commissioner Ward?
Just a clarification, the, and I'm gonna estimate, I think it was 4,146 square feet. Is that both units or is that just the B&amp;B?
Just the, just the B&amp;B, yeah, it's two floors.
Thank you.
And, and, um, I guess I didn't tell you folks, uh, that, um, can you see the, the illustrations? Those are, um, one is of course zoomed in and one is, uh, uh, zoomed out.
Commissioner Lindsay?
Um, we can ask questions after.
After testimony, yeah. Okay, um, so now for the questions at this point, we'll go to public testimony. Um, we have, there's two people signed up to testify in person. Uh, the first is Richard Bernstein, followed by Zachary Bernstein. Okay. Um, yeah, so I understand you are the applicants for this. So you could be. Yeah, you're not entirely testifiers per se, you would be just.
Ask me some questions if you'd like, I don't know.
Okay, so you're here to answer questions?
Yes.
But if you have anything additional to present about this project? Otherwise, it's good to know that you're here in case we have any questions. Okay, um, is there anybody online signed up to testify? Okay, Daygecko is signed up to testify online.
Aloha, uh, Yohanna Law, testifying on my own behalf. Um, so I was looking at the, um, staff report and then also the testimony that was submitted. I'm kind of surprised no one else is testifying because it seemed like everyone is in that area who submitted testimony written is opposed. Um, so in general, I, I think bed and breakfast is a relatively low-impact way to do tourism and, um, it minimizes a lot of the, the impacts that other types of tourism, uh, accommodations have. But I think, um, you know, the staff report kind of listed the ways that it complies with the community plans and all of that stuff, but it also, uh, listed how it didn't. And so I was surprised when I got to the end, it recommended approval. And just so you guys know, not every planning department in every city recommends approval or not approval. Um, there's a lot who have a policy of not recommending anything and leaving it up to the Planning Commission. So, um, I think the planning department can, should consider doing that, especially in cases like this where, uh, there's reasons for and against something. And the major thing right now is the housing crisis. And at the same time, we also have over tourism. And the general plan, I believe, says that we are supposed to have 34% uh, ratio, um, for tourists to residents. And so we're way above that. I think the last I saw was like 50% and maybe it's less now after the fire and, and, and various other things. But I think we're still way above. So, uh, like, by definition, approving more tourism units is not a thing that is in compliance with, um, the general plan. So, uh, I am opposed to this. Um, it, it actually does seem like a nice place, it's very opulent. But this is, if you drive around this neighborhood, it's very similar in character to like Lahaina Luna and places like that. It's an older working-class neighborhood and it's being gentrified. So then when you say, well, it's oceanfront or it's, 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 it's too nice for residents, I think you're just reinforcing, um, the gentrification that is happening. And, you know, this is just one house, but when this happens over and over and over again, it's part of the displacement. Um, and so you guys really have to consider the big picture, which is displacement of residents and especially native Hawaiians. I know there used to be a lot of native Hawaiians in this area and now probably none. Um, you know, so to continue doing things that are destructive, especially when you guys voted for the Minnetoka phase-out, this would go against that and this would provide fodder for lawsuits and things like that. They're gonna be able to point to this and be like, wait a minute, the Planning Commission approved a bed and breakfast while saying they wanted to phase us out. So, anyway, mahalo.
Thank you for your testimony. Uh, questions from the Commission? Seeing none, thanks again. Uh, is there anybody else online signed up to testify?
Thank you, Chair, there's no one else signed up.
Okay, um, we'll do the last. Oh? Okay, do you have any questions for the testifier, for the applicant? Okay, they're indicating no. Um, last call for testimony, if there's anybody online who wishes to testify, please, um, indicate yourself to staff in the chat. Uh, going once, going twice, three times, uh, testimony is closed. Um, Commissioners, any further questions for the applicant or the Department?
And one for the Department?
Yes.
Um, is there a shoreline certification with this?
Actually, we don't look at the SMA and shoreline certification because there's no development proposed at this time, so.
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the reason I ask, just looking at the photos, it looks like it's super close to the ocean. I was concerned about that if, if it meets the Surexa, et cetera. And next for the planner, I throw another one in there?
Um, go ahead.
So, um, how many are we slated to do in South Maui? What's the number, um, that we?
Um, so I think there are 48 permitted B&amp;Bs in the CAPPIS 100.
Okay, thank you.
Um, go ahead, I bring something up too. Um, I want to ask the applicant if it's a fixed shoreline too, in that area?
Is the shoreline fixed?
Um, the, the question is the shoreline fixed? There's, there's a wall. Yeah, there's a, there is a sea wall already existing. Okay. Yeah, so it's not beachfront, it's oceanfront.
Uh, Commissioner Lindsay?
Um, on page three of the application, it says it is within the three-foot Surexa number four parcel. I'm not sure about the dwelling.
Um, I have a question. Um, is the applicant and for resident property manager son, are they Maui County residents?
Uh, well, Zach definitely is a resident, um, yes.
Both of them?
Yes. Okay, so, uh, RJ, because he goes back and forth.
How long has he been a Maui County resident?
You need to speak into the microphone.
I've been a Maui County resident. By definition of when I got my driver's license here, about four years ago.
Okay.
But I've been coming to Maui and it's been a home for longer than that.
Okay. Um, so when, like, when I look at these, I look at reasons why we should approve, um, something like this. And, um, the, like, what, like, within our capacity to, um, what I look for is people who are contributing to Maui and that's the special thing that whenever I see these short-term rentals.
Yeah.
Um, or B&amp;Bs come in, like, why is this different than other? Why do you get one of the golden tickets? Um, so as I'm reading the application, it says that you bought the property in November 2020, um, which is about how long you've been a resident, formal resident here?
Yeah, uh, you, now, about a year before that, before this property.
Okay. Um, but, so, understanding that that's what I'm looking for is how you're contributing, how this is different. Why, as opposed to noise concerns are a concern, housing in Maui, especially now, is a, is definite concern. So why is this different?
Uh, well, it says, I consider Maui, uh, my community and my home. Um, as far as my contributions, although my work, I work as a writer from my house, specifically to my community, uh, this past year, I got certified as a rescue scuba diver, an emergency first responder. Uh, partly inspired from my experience going to Lahaina fires as a first, as an informal first responder. Um, so that's my contribution to the island, my services. As far as, uh, with this property, um, I do understand, um, the negative impacts that some of these properties can have and having noisy neighbors and those things. And I go to bed very early, quiet time's important to me personally, um, sleep's very important to me. And it is very important that I don't disturb my neighbors because I'm friends with my immediate. And it is very important that I don't disturb my neighbors because I'm friends with my immediate neighbor and several others around there. So maintaining those relationships is important to me and in the neighborhood. And so I would make sure and it's a priority that this bed and breakfast does not negatively impact the social community around an immediate seat.
Okay, thank you for that.
Mahalo.
Any additional questions from the commission?
I want more.
Vice Chair.
Sure. I think so, if you're renting these out, is it per family or are you renting room by room? It's going to be unrelated people?
No, the intention is to rent it to families. Families or groups of people who know each other at the same time. So it's larger gatherings of, you know, eight people at the house. That's our capacity. So anywhere from two people to eight people would be who are renting it to, but not separate people in and out. It'd be one group at a time, depending on their length of stay.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Ward?
It's my understanding that each room can have two adults and two minors. So that would be a total of twelve.
Hmm, I thought it was just two, I thought it was just two per bed. And so we have four bedrooms, four beds, so that's eight.
Chair, can you comment on this, please?
Okay, so condition number five in the recommendation, it says the total number of guests shall be limited to up to two adult guests and up to two minor guests per bedroom being rented. And that's in accordance with the law.
Yeah. So I would say, even though that allows for two more, our intention is to do two per room because we don't want to be an overburden, so.
Commissioner Lindsay?
When you originally purchased the property, was that kind of your intention to, I assume you're coming here with your family, including your father? Was that kind of the intention to like have space for him to be able to come and for you to?
Yes. So part of his economic reasons, these houses are very expensive and for us to even afford it, it helps to offset those costs, you know. My father bought this as a family property for our family and for us to afford it and for it to stay in the family. We do have to offset those costs to make it affordable.
Thank you. I have a question. Have you spoken with your neighbors about this?
Yes, with my immediate neighbor, Gal, who's the only one we have a shared property wall with. He's known about this for several years. Well, he has no objections to it at all.
What about the people who submitted letters of testimony in opposition?
So I just saw this for the first time like fifteen minutes ago. And none of them had previously said anything to me. I do know Roy and Estrella Dunn. And I don't, we never talked about it. And so I never could explain our intention. So if I did talk with them to clarify that we're renting to families and it's not a party house and that it's going to be very respectfully done. So I'm very convinced if I spoke with them that they would remove their objection.
And are there testifi, the other piece of written testimony from Gary?
I haven't read through this one yet. Is there any questions specifically you have on this one?
Same question of if you've had any dialogue with them?
I haven't, I've not had, and no one's raised anything in person to me. And we've had the sign-up for, I think, two years now, I want to say. So plenty of time for people, no one's dropped anything in our mailbox anonymously or talked to me in person about it at all.
Okay. Commissioner Ward?
Thank you, Chair. Could you give approximation to how close those two individuals or those two neighbors are to your property?
Yeah, so. Oh, sorry. So I'm not, yeah, I'm not sure Gary and Linda, do you know her sixteen?
Sixteen thirty-seven?
Okay, so the Alainui sixteen thirty-seven is not even on our street. So that's Gary and Linda Edger. And Roy and Estrella Dunn are, I want to say, seven or eight houses over. So they're, I would say, four hundred feet, maybe, four hundred, five hundred feet down the road towards Palama Park. Thank you.
Commissioner Dicos, do you have any questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I guess I was looking at a different app, I don't know. So the, do you know when that seawall was built?
I do not. It was probably a long time ago since it's one of the straight-up vertical ones and not sloped. So it was definitely there for a long time. I guess maybe the eighties, I don't know, it's a guess.
And on a, on a heavy corner swell, you get some splash on your, you get some overtopping?
Yes, a little overtopping on just the front cement portion, maybe like three to, three to five feet will get a little bit of a splash.
Some sand on your?
No, no sand, no sand.
Do you, you guys have any plans for, you just acquired the property, you're probably going to be dealing with some major issues with the ocean. Do you have a long-term plan for how you're going to mitigate that?
What you're saying as with respect to the condition of the seawall?
That and once, it sounds like it's starting to breach the seawall on a, on a heavy swell. So what is the strategy for defending yourself against the ocean?
Well, the house is set back thirty feet. Thirty, forty feet from, from the seawall. And the front-facing part of the seawall that takes a brunt is shown nowhere. And it seems in very solid condition. It doesn't seem like it's, we have anything to worry about in the for, in the close future. I would say the next fifteen to twenty years maybe is when I think that seawall would start to degrade, but I'm not an expert, that's just my guess.
Okay, but as far as, and you understand sea level rises?
Yes, yes.
An erosion thing, that's more of a filling the bathtub?
Yes, exactly.
Any issues currently with the water table and strategies for managing that in the future?
Again, we don't have any current issues. If someone brought to our attention that were issues in the foreseeable future, I would seek the advice of professionals in that department and take their advice and implement them, especially any advice from the county.
Okay. No further questions, thank you, Chair.
Okay. Any further questions from the commission? Commissioner Dicos?
Just a question because we're trying to mitigate the coastal issues we're facing. Obviously, you saw that map of what your future looks like in the flood area. It's not looking very good.
Yeah.
One of the challenges is that property owners absolutely want to defend for obvious reasons. They want to defend their position. Once the ocean has breached your property line, that becomes state property. And either you get an easement or it has to be removed. I mean, would you, are you, would you be willing to not defend and relocate as needed so that that shoreline can continue to migrate landward naturally?
Hold on, Commissioner Dicos, I think that is outside the scope of the permit that is before us.
I wanted to, can I note something?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, this is Corporation Council. So one issue is that this is not a development permit where they're actually building something. It's a use permit for a different kind of use. The, the code section on this says that initial bed and breakfast home permits are valid for a maximum period of three years, except that shorter periods may be approved to mitigate impacts. So this can't go for more than three years. I believe the department can renew it after that. But this is, I think, a little different than you would look at for an actual development permit where you're building something. Now, if the commission has concerns, I mean, and then there's also the, I'm not saying that, that there's not other potential issues because there are requirements for this permit that the applicant has to show that they meet. But something like a use permit, I'm not sure that you would have an appropriate condition dealing with sea level rise because the use can just be, you know, the bed and breakfast use could be ceased. It can't go more than three years without a renewal period and you could even approve a shorter period of time if you think that there's issues. But of course, relative to sea level rise, while you would potentially have visitors in there, I think you're probably looking at the same impacts versus if you didn't have the permit as far as the shoreline impacts. So as far as a condition against that, that issue that you brought up, I'm not sure if that is something that would be tied to the impact of the development, which would be the bed and breakfast use. Although if you've got concerns, perhaps a smaller permit duration time could be appropriate. I would say, though, that that's, you could still, I think this is section nineteen six four oh five OB, you still have the requirements there where the appropriate planning commission must review and either approve or deny the application in accordance with the requirements of this chapter, the effects the proposed use would have on surrounding uses and the human of impacts within the region and island. And so I just wanted to note that those are the criteria. So I wanted to note that in response to sort of the concerns raised.
Yeah, and I recognize this was a stretch. I'm just trying to find some give back. You know, was there potential benefits to the community? So I appreciate keeping me in my lane. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dicos. Vice Chair?
And would you be open to a condition that would limit you to the eight people? Instead of the, and the?
Instead of the, where it says two plus two per room?
Right.
Yes, but I think it's not the capacity, like having four people on a single bed, I don't think makes sense anyways. So our intention was two per bedroom. So that's, that's the intention. So happy to be limited at that, if that's your request.
Yeah, we've done that before. And for the neighbors, it's helpful and for what it's worth. There's one right next door to me in West Maui, a two-story house and in a residential neighborhood, not on the ocean, probably better suited for long term.
Yeah.
That being said, have no issues. It's family, they're in one car, they never make noise, they go up during the day. And as much as I want to be, oh, they're bad, they're not.
Yeah.
And the owner's number right on there and call him for anything. He's very receptive, you know. I know for the neighbors, that's an important part. And if you're there and you got your number out there and if they, yeah, any kind of, we're not happy, then you gotta be.
I would, yeah, I would say to me, that's not even a, you know, the idea of limiting it is our intention. So our intention is to have this only up to eight. And it's in my, my interest too, because I don't want a ton of people in there. And I, the thing I'll side note is I work from home, so I'm there all day as well, so.
Commissioner Ward?
Thank you, Chair. Hope this is my last question.
Yes, keep asking, it's okay.
Excuse me. So with you not having a management property, managing it, you doing it yourself, I'm assuming at some point you'll be going off-island for some period of time, we all do. How do you intend to have that managed while you're not here?
I will not be renting it out when I'm off-island.
Oh, do we still have Commissioner Dicos?
Yeah, you don't see me? Oh.
Oh.
Correct.
We hear you.
My bad.
Okay, sorry, just making sure we have quorum at all times. Any further questions? Okay. Okay. Any further questions from the commission? No more? Okay, we can hear the recommendation from the department.
Okay, so there are no requests for service or complaints filed with the department with respect to the property, no reports or complaints were filed with the police department. Two protest letters were submitted and various reasons were provided, including the unwanted traffic, noise or activities in excess of what is normal for a residential neighborhood. They also noted the exacerbated long-term rental and housing problem and the lack of housing inventory that is driving the high rental prices. But despite the protests, the application meets the criteria for a B and B permit and the department is recommending approval. We note that the applicant lives on-site in the second dwelling. Also, the property is located along the shoreline, so it's uncertain whether the dwelling could be easily rented to a Maui resident for a fair price. So the department's also requesting the commission authorize the director of planning to transmit said written decision order on behalf of the planning commission. And I do have some proposed amendments, so condition number five. So the last sentence, if we could just amend it to say the total number of guests shall be limited to up to two guests per bedroom being rented. And we just scratch out the rest of the verbiage. And then if we can just add a condition to say the B and B shall be limited to one group at a time? That's it. I don't know if you guys have any other proposed conditions of approval?
Commissioner Lindsay?
Sorry, I didn't even check on parking. Is there adequate parking for four rooms?
Yeah, there's adequate parking for four rooms.
Which means four parking stalls?
There's a total of eight parking spaces on-site, including two guest spaces.
And do you happen to know how much that would increase the traffic on the street with the neighbors? Because eight, eight cars on a small street is a lot.
Yeah, that I don't know, but if we limit it to one group at a time, then it would probably be less cars, I'm thinking, so.
I would say if a property has a capacity to fit eight cars, we will not be putting eight cars there. We limit to one per bedroom, so four cars, yeah.
Would you be open to that being another condition?
Say that again?
Would you be open to that being another condition?
Sure, that's fine.
Commissioner Ward?
Thank you, Chair. And would you be open to a condition that if you're off-island, that there will be no one renting?
Of course, that's my intention.
I think that is condition number six. Yeah. Says that they cannot operate while the owner or proprietor is away overnight.
Could we amend that, so just overnight, it's off-island? Yeah, off-island for any circumstances, correct.
Would you want to do both? Because theoretically, they can be on-island but not on the property.
Right.
So I'm not sure if you want to make away that that's specific. I think your intention is if they're not staying there for the day, that they shouldn't operate. I mean, I think that's a requirement, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, in nineteen point six four, I think that's a requirement anyway, right? That you have to have either an on-site manager or somebody who is, who is, you know, or somebody who is, who is, you know, staying there overnight. So, I mean, that might be redundant with 1964's requirements anyway, if I'm not correct. But, yeah, maybe phrase that in a way that doesn't say, oh, if they're, they could be on Maui, but not staying there for the night somehow. So, I don't know if you say it should not be rented if they are, is away overnight or off island. So, that's what I was just gonna say.
You got that? Tanner, Tara?
Yeah.
Okay. I have another question for the applicant. Condition seventeen, which is a standard condition, talks about the owner proprietor ensuring that all guests are educated about Maui New East history and culture, potential detrimental impacts to natural and cultural resources, coastal environment, and near-shore waters. What is your plan for doing this?
Yes, for sure, gonna put together, I would say, a pamphlet that helps people educate on this, and bed and breakfast, and leave it in each of the rooms for each of the guests.
On what will, you know, do you have any specifics of what will go into that?
I haven't put that together yet. I was waiting for approval. But be just on the history of Maui, specifically with local Hawaiians, and how to respect Maui as a visitor to Maui and not a resident. And there's a way of handling yourself as a tourist that can contribute to the, contribute to here without being a burden or disrespectful. So, I will put together a thoughtful pamphlet on how to best for our guests to conduct themselves when they're on property and off property.
And further along those lines, you know, more than just having a thing that they may or may not read, when you
Yes.
welcome them to the property, would you incorporate some degree of education at that point?
Of course, that's very important to do. I will commit to doing that. Happy even put that in writing, that every guest will be educated on those matters.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ward.
Thank you Chair. If you're willing to have that as a condition, that's great. If I could add, would you be willing to have a cultural practitioner to review that, to ensure the accuracy and appropriateness?
Absolutely. As I'm not an expert, I'd be more than willing to, and I think that's very appropriate. Thank you.
Any questions? Commissioner Dicos.
Thanks for being very accommodating to the requests. Would you be willing to provide a managed retreat plan?
Say that again, a what plan?
A managed retreat plan, essentially how you will systematically retreat from the shoreline for the next ten, twenty years.
I, so I think if you saw the sea, sorry, if you saw the seawall, it's not of concern from the inspections we've had, it's very robust right now. I don't know if Corporate Council wants to say anything.
I mean, I think I already sort of gave my opinion on that. Again, if there are reasons for a shortened permit time, I mean, or a denial based on the other requirements of 19.64, I think those are options. If you find it does not meet the requirements. But, I just, I'm trying to see how a, I mean, a managed retreat plan or something like that, you may, if you're doing a development or something, you know, you may look at that as a potential impact. But I'm just trying to see how a change in use, which certainly can have impacts in this case, but have been determined to not need any sort of SMA or shoreline approvals, would the nexus between that and a managed retreat, because again, that's going to be an issue no matter who's in there. But again, if there's, if there's an issue where allowing this for short-term use for the three-year time period you find is inappropriate, you could have a shorter time period, or could deny based on the criteria in 19.64. But I just, I'm having a tough time having that nexus with this type of use permit. Again, not saying it wouldn't be appropriate to delve into that for other types of permits and approvals, but this is a, this is a use permit not affecting the actual physical, you know, structures or anything like that. So, that's my concern. I think I've already stated it, but that's where...
Right. So, is the, is the applicant not allowed to provide one, if they were willing to provide one?
The concern is requesting that, and considering that as a factor for approval or denial when it's not, you know, listed there. That's the problem. We go to executive session to discuss sort of, you know, some of the concerns with that too. But, you know, that's, that's, you know, that's the, I think you've asked the question, and I'm trying to tie it to 1964 criteria, and having a difficult time doing that as far as how it can, how it can relate and be, you know, have a nexus with that as a, as a condition or a requirement. You know, presumably, you're asking that question because you are considering that as part of your decision-making. And because it's not in the criteria for decision-making, that's why I'm, you know, raising the caution.
Okay, okay. Okay, so to clarify, if like a cultural plan to educate tourists, things like that, those can be used as a decision-making process, but not a managed retreat plan? Is that?
I can see the argument that there is a nexus between having an increased number of visitors and potential cultural impacts. Having additional visitors, I'm not sure how that affects the shoreline erosion issue.
I get it. Okay, thanks for the clarification. That makes sense. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Commissioner Dicos. Any further questions from the commission? Vice Chair.
Well, hard to be a hardball on that one. For our neighbors, would you be willing to go for two cars instead of four? That's eight people, it's just a lot of people, and two cars. Can you do that? Is that okay for a condition?
Yeah, I could say, with speaking with our direct neighbor, that we told them how many cars we initially intending, and they did not object to that.
Yeah, it's, I'm not hard and fast on it, but I'm trying to be sensitive to people that are, and, you know, lately, there's been a big push of, you know, like, and you're not a Minnetoka, you're not a STR, you know, this bed and breakfast that we still have, but like Commissioner Lindsay said, it's the golden ticket.
Yes, yes. I guess I would say it would be a maximum of four, likely less. I would also say, given the tourists writing this, or begin to be affluent tourists, I wouldn't want to put that, like, that, like, allow, we can, what I think would be a reasonable thing to do, and I'm happy to do, is request that they have as few cars as possible.
Yeah, fair enough.
Thank you.
Yeah, I do appreciate where Vice Chair Thompson is coming from, because this is a small street. There are still many everyday residents who live on this street. It's generally trafficked by only the people who live here. And four additional cars is considerable for this area. And so, you know, I think it's within our realm to find some degree of balance. Like, yes, guests are coming with a certain expectation, maybe, for what their experience will be like. But at the same time, you know, they are entering a neighborhood where people do live and raise children, and carry out their everyday lives. And, you know, who's to say that somebody coming, however much money they're paying for a night, who's to say that they get to have each of their car because they want it?
So, how many would you recommend?
I think I would open that to my commissioners, but I do think four is a lot.
Is three seem like a happy medium for everyone?
Yeah.
I'm happy with, if you guys are happy with that.
Commissioner Ward.
Thank you Chair. Just to clarify, I'm just trying to flip through the picture a little bit. The cars are blocked with the gate, so it would not be visible from the street, is that correct?
Correct. There's a three-car garage, perfect for that number, actually. So, could we add to the condition, it has to be, the cars have to be in the garage?
In the garage versus just on the property?
Yeah, if that's important to you, that's easy for us. I'm just thinking from a visual aesthetic, from the community, that you don't see the cars, it's less irritating. So, if you'd be willing to have that as a condition, I appreciate that.
Would you say, like, 24/7, like, anytime they bring the car on the, you know, I'm just saying practical things, people pull up, loading surfboards in and out, that sort of thing? Overnight required in the garage?
Director?
I would encourage the council or commission to not be this prescriptive necessarily. I think limiting it to three cars is really decent, and the fact that there are three vehicles, or three spots in the garage, you can encourage potentially them to park in the garage. But I think it's not necessary.
Pete actually has a front gate, so you can't usually see anything from the street, too.
That was my biggest concern, just the visual, if neighbors see it.
Completely understand, yeah.
That has angst where it's hidden to a degree, so I would be comfortable with three.
Completely understand, thank you.
Further questions from the commission? Or we can entertain a motion. I do want to note, you know, there's the options that are in the staff report, defer, approve with no conditions, approve with conditions, or deny. I think we could also give this to the South Maui Advisory Committee to give us a recommendation. I just want to put that out there. But this is the public hearing. Commissioner Lindsay, are you raising your hand?
I was just making calculations, and if they were rented out at the rate of paying G E T and T A T, $60,000 G E T and T A T, and they're at 100% occupancy for six months, that would be roughly 1,850 a night.
As far as the cost of renting it out?
Yes.
Our intention is around 4,000 a night.
Well, that's at full 100% occupancy for six months while you're not there. Because I can't make any other...
We definitely don't intend to rent it out to that extent.
Yeah, so it is really high.
Well, if there are no further questions or deliberation, we can entertain a motion. Vice Chair.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve this with the conditions, the original seventeen and the ones we've added.
Should we clarify the ones that we've added?
One to three cars?
Sure, yes.
I think the planner has those, and it would be helpful to have her read them, just to make sure that we have them as well.
Okay, so you want to hear the amended conditions as well?
Yes, please.
Okay, so, number five, we're just amending to say, the total number of guests shall be limited to up to two guests per bedroom rented. Number six, we're editing to say that the B and B home shall not operate during any times that the owner proprietor is off island or away overnight. Okay, then we're adding conditions. The B and B shall be limited to one group at a time. Guests shall be, shall not, guests shall be allowed to occupy no more than a maximum of three parking stalls onsite. And then, I thought we'd amend condition number seventeen, and say, for the last sentence, evidence of such an education program shall be reviewed by a cultural practitioner prior to submission to the planning department, prior to operation. And that's what I have so far.
If I may, the education, we can have language to have, like, verbal and written forms?
Okay.
Okay. All right, so motion on the floor to approve with all of these conditions.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, it's a tough one. I didn't come in thinking that I would even, you know, entertain all these, it's just dicey, but you meet all the requirements, and, you know, it's like you'll be a good host there. And that's really what every neighborhood looks for, is just a good host, you know, be there for the neighbors, helpful, whatever. But, yeah, I think it's within the scope of what's permitted there.
I'll agree with that.
Second?
I as well came in with some reservations, just knowing that area, and it's small and tight.
Stand-up, yeah.
But I appreciate you accommodating the conditions and being open and flexible. So, for that reason, for those reasons, I feel that it's appropriate. It's a three-year term, that if it doesn't work, you might not get renewed. But I think, based on your flexibility and understanding your limitations, I feel it's appropriate.
Commissioner Lindsay.
On that, what are the, what, how is it challenged at the next, like, within the three years, or after the three years?
Challenged?
Like, if they were bad neighbors?
Yeah, we base it on neighbor complaints, basically. And so, neighbor complaints, and then if they come in for renewal, you know, we'll research, like, if there's been any, like, police, you know, interventions, etc. So, yeah. And then part of the process, right, is they have to notify the neighbors that they got approval, so then the neighbors will be on notice. And then, you know, they have our number that they can call. So, we kind of can keep a tight lid on that.
And the department has a arm for this?
Yeah, we have an enforcement division.
Any further discussion from the commission? Commissioner Dicos?
Yeah, thank you Chair. I'm gonna support the motion, maybe to, the surprise of any. But I think on the grand scheme of things, the impact is minimal, you're stand-up guy. I think bed and breakfasts are a whole different ball of impacts. I encourage other folks to apply for the bed and breakfast permits to help support at least folks that may need it a little more, so that they can support covering their cost of living here on Maui. So, yeah, and since I cannot consider the shoreline impacts, I do hope that down the road, when you do have to face repairs there, you could have a nice little beach there. If you slide back, you'd have a little pocket beach. So, we look forward to that happening. But I'll be supporting that. Thank you Chair.
Thank you, Malo.
Thank you Commissioner Dicos. Commissioner Lindsay.
I, I still have major hesitations about this. I, like you, I'm happy you spoke to us today. I was definitely edging on no before you spoke. I, but the need for housing is extreme, and I understand the need to keep your home where you want to be, I guess, where you have your family, and where your family wants to be at least six months of the year. So, I am, I am on the fence right now about this.
I would, I would just like to add...
Sorry, you can't speak unless you're...
It's okay.
A question is asked.
Chair, could I ask you a question?
Yes, Commissioner Ward.
Um, on average, and I know this is hard to estimate, but what duration of time do you anticipate the, the rental to be? 10 days, 7 days, 2 weeks?
Per group, per group renting it, how long are they gonna stay?
On, on average, just what, what's your?
My guess would be, uh, 5 to 7 days would probably be about what I'd expect.
Let's have a question. Um, noting the timeline of the application. Um, so you purchased in 2020, applied for this in 2021. Um, was this, when the property was purchased, was this always your intent to rent it out?
It's the only way we can afford it, is to bring in that economic consideration of offsetting the cost.
Um, okay, so yes.
Yes, so yes.
Okay, and had you not had the option of renting it out, you would not have purchased this property?
Hmm. That would have been very difficult and probably not.
Okay. Um. Commissioner Lindsay, stare. Any, uh, condition or anything else that would help you decide one way or the other?
What's immediately going through my head is deferring till we have another commissioner.
Um. What about putting this to the South Maui Advisory Committee for a recommendation?
My concern with that is the same thing, the quorum. Our quorum, their quorum, when the timing, the whole problem with the beast. But I mean, yeah, that's an option.
Because we could put a timeline on that, like they have, say, 90 days from now to act, because we have a 120-day limitation to take action, correct?
So Chair, automatically, it's a 90-day for South Maui Advisory Committee. Once you send it to them, they have 90 days from their first meeting to, to act upon it, and then, yes, that 120 days is in effect for you as well.
But the 120-day clock starts now.
Yes.
And the 90-day clock doesn't start until they have their meeting, so if that is like 30 days from now, then we would be up against our 120-day.
Yep.
Limitation.
And do we know if they have quorum?
So Chair, a couple things on that. I mean, we cannot defer this item to a date that we have quorum, because we often don't know we have quorum until the few weeks before the meeting, right? So that, that's not going to be possible. Um, as far as quorum goes for South Maui Advisory Committee, I think we got a new committee member or two just recently. Um, but it's always, it's always tricky, because we don't have a full committee there either. So I cannot make any promises. You already have one item pending in front of, uh, in front of them, and we're still trying to get a meeting scheduled.
Okay, um, so my, most of my hesitations were, um, figured out here, and I'm ready to swim with the majority.
Okay. Um, I guess I'll say, I, I think I appreciate where you're coming from in terms of, you know, how can, um, like tourism actually benefit our local residents? And like, how do we make sure that the money coming in actually, actually stays like within our island economy? And not just get siphoned out wherever you may do your banking? You know? Um, and like there, the rule for B and Bs now is that you have to have owned the property for five years before you can rent it out, but your application came in like days before that cutoff went into effect, and I don't know if that was conscious or not on your part, but that's the way it landed, and so you are technically able to be, um, assessed based on the old rules, which does not require that five-year um, threshold of ownership. Um, but I, I, you know, I hear like testimony that's come in wary of this, um, neighborhood being gentrified, being turned into, uh, more of a, you know, vacation community versus a residential community, and, you know, with every single house that gets permitted one way or another, like it's that whole thing of it's maybe not a significant impact in itself, but when you look at the cumulative impact over time, then, you know, if this keeps getting approved and approved and approved, every house in this neighborhood, then it's gonna be like, oh, well, this is a vacation rental neighborhood, not a residential neighborhood, and then it changes the whole character of the whole entire place, and then property values go up and people can't live there anymore who should actually be living here. I think, you know, the, you know, in speaking to the housing crunch, um, a B and B is a bit of a compromise, because somebody actually has to be living there full-time, all the time, and it's just whatever other portion of your property you're able to rent out, you can, so it's like, in a sense, as long as, you know, the person living there is, you know, a contributing member of the community that is actually like more, I would say, more than just through taxes, putting the money into our economy, because there is a lot that could be put into our economy beyond just the T A T and the G E T. You know, that's, that's ideal, you know? Then our residents get the benefit of the tourism, and that money circulates here and adds to our prosperity of our community. And so, um, that's a little bit long-winded, but those are, I'm just sharing the thoughts that are going through my head about this. That helps. Um, but if everybody is ready to vote, I think we can do that. Unless you have anything else.
I'm ready.
Uh, Director? Commissioner Ward?
Aye.
Commissioner Lindsay?
Aye.
Commissioner Decos?
Aye.
Vice Chair Thompson?
Aye.
Chair Thayer?
And I will vote with the majority, so I.
Mahalo.
Five votes in favor.
Really thank you for your time and, and your consideration and, uh, making an exception for us. It's very well appreciated, and I promise to write this out in a very respectful manner to the community and have a positive influence and no negative influence as much as in my control. So mahalo very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, it is 10:44 now. Commissioners, would you like a 10, a 10-minute break?
Chair will need a, a 5 to 10-minute break to set up the room for the next.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
Let us take 10 minutes and come back at 10:55. Good morning, still, everybody. We gave an extra five minutes for our break, so we are reconvening at 11:01 a.m. to the Maui Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, October 22nd, 2024. And we now have two communication items before us, neither of which will have any public testimony. Um, Director, please read item C1 into the record.
Item C1, H2R LLC requesting a special management area use permit for the proposed H2 residential project consisting of up to 53 single-family condominium lots, beach parking, and related infrastructure improvements. Each future individual lot owner will construct a single-family dwelling unit and related accessory buildings located on the same lot on approximately 28 acres in size, located along Mauna Kea, Ala Nui, and Mauna Kea, Keoneo, roads, Mauna Island of Maui, Oaie at TMK 221005085 and 120 portions, SM1 2019 dash 0008. Uh, Danny Diaz is the planner, but this is a bigger item so than that.
Sorry. But Chair, I think you can proceed by having the parties enter their appearances through legal counsel, and then, um, the parties have, uh, I think, different opinions on how normally at a pre-hearing conference, which is not always handled by the commission, but in this case can be handled by the commission. The commission would sort of decide, uh, in this case, when a hearing date would be, and work backwards from that to determine the different, uh, deadlines prior to that for, for various actions. Uh, the parties have different opinions on how that should be done, and so I think, um, you, you've had a chance to read written filings by all the parties. Please confirm that you have seen them for the H2 matter. If not, we can take time to review them. If you would like, you could give the parties some time to address their, uh, filings and what they think should be done with this, uh, this particular item in the, the hearing schedule. Uh, you can give them, see how much time they would like, maybe you can give them 10 minutes, 5 minutes, whatever you think appropriate. I think you could start with the, uh, with the applicant, go to intervenors, go to county, and then if applicant has, has rebuttal or something, they could reserve some time. Like we generally do that for these types of items, but I'd leave it up to you, Chair, and the commissioners to their pleasure. But that's my, uh, that's sort of my suggestion with how to proceed. Again, you're not going to be deciding the merits of this case, you're going to be siding, deciding a hearing schedule, um, and items such as, um, whether, uh, discovery would be allowed, whether, uh, what the hearing date would be, and, um, any filing dates required prior to that hearing, such as with witness lists and exhibit lists, and any sort of pre-hearing motions to be, uh, to be filed. So I think, uh, you could have the parties enter their appearances, see how much time they would need for their, uh, discussion of their, um, of their filings, and then complete that process. You can ask questions to any party and then take, uh, take action to set that schedule.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Hopper. I think we will move forward accordingly. So first, can the parties introduce themselves, indicate who will speak for them, and the time, um, you would need for discussion?
Hi, Chair, Commissioners, Cal Chipchase for H2, Kailua Whitaker is with me as well. I, I think as Mr. Hopper explained, we're just here to discuss the scheduling of the contested case, and so absent, you know, extensive argument from the intervenors, I think 5 minutes each side is ample for, for that scheduling discussion.
Good, thank you. Interveners?
Good morning, Bianca Isaki and Ryan Hurley here via Zoom for the, um, for the interveners, sorry, via WebEx. Uh, we have a proposed procedural schedule that raises some substantive issues about procedures. Um, we want 5 minutes.
Okay. And?
Yeah, Deputy Corporation Counsel Brian Billbury on behalf of Maui County. Uh, I don't need any time. I've already interfered with this matter enough, so, uh, I'll let the, uh, intervener and the applicant deal with this issue.
Um, okay, okay, well, we'll give each, uh, party 5 minutes, and to the applicant, if you wish to reserve time for rebuttal at the end, out of your 5 minutes, you may do so.
Very good, Chair.
And staff can keep time, yeah? Thanks.
Uh, Chair, this is Bianca Isaki. If I may, we were the ones that proposed the procedural schedule, not the applicant?
Actually, that, that's not true. We, we proposed in our initial filing.
I think everybody has proposed a schedule, and so we'll go, we're going by the order that Corp Counsel has recommended.
Okay.
And so if, if you look at our, our filing to the commission that initiated this, uh, proceeding, we filed on September 13th, we proposed a, a contested case hearing that would begin in November. Took a bit to get this on calendar, so that might not be realistic, but it reflects, um, two things. One, that this commission already heard and approved the final environmental assessment, so it's not as if this is a new project to the commission. Two, it also reflects a discussion that we have, uh, back before this, is referred to another hearing officer, uh, to DPR, that we only need about four hours probably to present our case. It's not, it's not complicated. It's 53 homes on 28 acres, not near the shoreline. The third thing it reflects is that the applications in this case were filed in 2019. So this proceeding is already five years old, and any further delay continues to be at the applicant's detriment, and so proceeding to contested case hearing as quickly as possible, given that we went through one contested case hearing officer and are now back before the commission, and those delays and the nature of it, we think is entirely appropriate. The dates that follow from that, we simply work backwards from the date that is set for the contested case hearing, a date for motions to be due and heard, and a date for exhibit lists and witness lists to be submitted by the parties or exchanged among the parties and submitted to the commission. This is not the trial of the century. This is a simple contested case on an SMA that is now five years old. We would ask that it be set as soon as possible, since we've lost November as a realistic option. We would ask to begin the contested case hearing in December, and certainly no later than the first meeting in January. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, intervenors?
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Isaki, hold on one second.
Sorry, just, it would be helpful for each party to, to identify the specific action the commission, uh, they would like the commission to, to take. I'm presuming for the, um, the applicants, it's to set a hearing and, uh, basically make a decision consistent with your, your filing request for a procedural schedule, but if you could simplify it as much as possible for the commission as far as what specific action you would like the commission to take today, that would be, that would be helpful. So I, I don't know if applicant wants to address that really quick. I should have asked for that at the beginning, but I just wanted to make real clear what action you want the commission to actually take, you know, sort of in simple terms today.
Happy to, Mike, so I'll take another 30 seconds and do that. We would like the commission to set the hearing date. I think that the Chair could set the hearing date herself as the presiding officer for the contested case, but we're here before the commission, and so I would ask the commission to set the contested case hearing date, and then two dates that follow from that. The date for all motions to be submitted, any pre-hearing motions that need to be filed, a deadline for those. The second is a deadline or a date for the exchange of the witness list and the exhibit list among the parties. I would suggest, as I said, that the contested case hearing begin in December, certainly no later than January, that motions be due at least two weeks before then, and that exhibit and witness lists be exchanged between the parties at least one week before the contested case hearing date.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Isaki, please go ahead.
Thank you. Sorry, I thought it was still on mute. Bianca Isaki for intervenors. Um, so we're asking also for a contested case to be set. Um, we don't think it could happen in December, because we do have, um, other, we, we would want it February, possibly March. Um, we're asking for procedural safeguards in this case. We filed them, um, we filed our filing on October 8th. So there's two problems with the way that contested cases have been proceeding before the commission, and they're too long, and they are unfair, and these two things are linked. What happens is applicants, they change their proposals midstream. In Pa'ahu Solar, you got a new site plan a day before the hearing. Wailea 670 documents, they're changed multiple times during the hearing, and Grand Wailea, they were changed even afterwards. We had to reopen the hearing, so, I mean, we had three drainage plans in two months. So these midstream changes, they leave intervenors, we're scrambling to reassess, we gotta get our experts to, um, to revise and look at them, investigate the impacts. And that's, that's our right. We have a right under the Administrative Procedure Act to cross-examine, submit rebuttal evidence. Constitutional due process has to be done in a meaningful time and in a meaningful manner. So all of this takes time, and when you have, um, and when you have processes and changes that are this substantive as a project change, you, we do want you to take the time. So what, um, what the, what H2 has said is that intervenors will do anything to delay the project, but that's not true. What we're doing, and because we don't want to keep perpetually funding, reviewing, and litigating new proposals, or worse, like not being able to address them meaningfully, so that's why what we've asked for in our motion is like, first thing that we asked was, H2, please, look, really look at what we've raised in our many, many, many filings, because I mean, this as, as. Because, I mean, this, as H2 has said, we did, we entered, well, we filed a challenge to the final environmental assessment, which was final in 2022. And so they have, so they basically know what the issue is. What we don't want is to go to hearing, or to start going to hearing, and then say, and have them say, look, we have a new project, or we have these changes. I mean, just even in their filings, they said they reduced the project based on preservation and other commitments. And, but the preservation plan, I understand, it wasn't final until June 2023, which was after the March 2022 final environmental assessment. So we want clarification as to like, okay, well, did you change it like after the FEA? And what do the reductions entail exactly? I mean, in their filing, they said, well, we gave you more open space, and, but will there still be drainage easements or utilities going through them? Where exactly is everything? When they say the site plan is the same, but does that mean, the site plan is just a map? Does that mean how you're going to treat the areas within it, is that going to be the same? H2 also said that we've contradicted ourselves by saying that we want the project modified, but, and they cited, or they quoted us from April 9th, but we were talking about settlement. One of the Commissioners said, do we want to stop the project, modify it, or get more money? And we said, yeah, we're trying to modify the project in mediation. But mediation, that's not an adversarial, it's not an evidentiary proceeding. We're not cross-examining or rebutting evidence in settlement talks. And in any case, we do want a different project. We just want sufficient time to review those modifications to see if they do what H2 says they will. So that's why the second of our proposals and our procedural safeguards is that if they do change the project, we should get like an automatic continuance. Instead of having to file a motion for continue, have the Commission decide it. And if they do raise things, it shouldn't be things, if they raise, if they make changes, it shouldn't be proposed as rebuttal or mitigation for things that we raised in our, you know, all the other filings before, that have been for them for years. So our second proposal is, if there are changes.
30 seconds?
Then we should get, sorry, we should get four weeks to review it. And the third is, we provided a very reasonable 15-week procedural schedule for all, for the evidentiary contested case. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bilbury?
Oh, thank you, Chair. I don't have anything to add.
Okay. Mr. Chip Chase?
Yes, Chair, happy to. So the idea that an application cannot be reduced in scope or additional preservation areas added in response to comments from interveners, the public, or the Commission is quite silly. It would really eliminate the purpose of having any sort of contested case or hearing at all. The application or an application is supposed to be vetted, supposed to be reviewed by the Commission, and if there are comments, concerns, or changes, conditions or changes are supposed to be imposed. You saw that just in the discussions that we had previously. We've seen that in hundreds of hearings, whether contested or not, and an application is modified in response to comments by the Commission, by the public, by others. That is the process, and to pretend that's not the process or there's something wrong with it is silly. What they're saying is we can't take yes for an answer. If we raise a concern and you address it, we can't take that yes, because what we really want is to stop your project, not to address our concerns with it. The chapter that we're dealing with here is the SMA chapter. It specifically contemplates that in review, projects should be modified to avoid impacts, and that even if there are impacts, the Commission has an obligation to consider whether those impacts can be modified to the extent practicable. If they can, then it has an obligation to approve it. The whole thing contemplates modification along the way. So putting that issue aside, as we previously explained, the application before the Commission is the application in the final environmental impact statement. That was the application that was presented in the public hearing, the Commission, and the application that we're proceeding on. There's nothing in the rules that contemplate the procedure that interveners have proposed, namely that now we have to respond to all of their comments, all of their questions, all of their challenges before the contested case hearing begins? That's not how it works. We present the application, then they have an opportunity to present their case, then we have an opportunity to rebut. That is the way the rules are structured. That is the way the statute is structured. That doesn't take 15 weeks.
30 seconds?
It doesn't take four weeks between any sort of modification or mitigation and then the next hearing that we have. This is a streamlined process. It's an agency proceeding. It should begin as soon as possible, should be conducted as quickly and efficiently as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, just to interveners, I want to make sure we're on the same page. We're looking at sort of the schedule, I think it's on page four of your filing, the proposed procedural schedule. So page four, sort of starting with, I would just make sure, sort of starting with, the applicant has to either confirm or proceed with the 2019 application, and file, I presume you're looking at that, they will file a document that addresses that question, and then you would, I mean, we'd have to have a motion for discovery to be filed after that, it appears, or I don't know if you're considering that. That happens, there's a motion for discovery filed, and then within five weeks of the date of that filing, there's discovery requests exchanged among parties. I guess between the filing of the additional information and the five weeks after that for discovery requests, I mean, or do you think the motion for discovery would be five weeks after that and then proceed from there? But if you could help the Commission, I think, with that to better understand that, I think that'd be helpful.
Thank you. Yes, Bianca Isaki for intervenors. So, you know, I was looking at the rules, I don't, although we have done this in Kahana Sunset, done a motion for discovery, yeah, we're happy to file like immediately after this motion for discovery. Maybe we can work out for, with the parties, or if you want to delegate to the Chair.
Sorry. He was talking about the applicant's time, which, yes, we're done with that at this one.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks. That's fine.
Oh, oh, yeah. We could just, in the next, right after this, in the next week, hopefully, if the parties are okay with it, work out a schedule for discovery, get that into a motion that perhaps you can delegate to your Chair to approve or disapprove. And then, that's, that's, that's what I would want under number one on page four of our filing.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify and point for the Commission that for, and then for the applicant, that it's, that it's in their, I just wanted to have the right filing, in the request to hold scheduling conference, that would be on page, well, there's the issue, they would sort of be a scheduling order consistent with what's in their filing. So that's on, starts on page, I think, I think that's page two of their filing. But I think what the parties are asking for are two sort of different orders that you would issue, if you will, that set the hearing schedule. And it appears, you know, applicant wants the hearing date set and work back from that. Interveners are saying you should not schedule a hearing until you get a supplemental, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but a supplemental filing, it sounds like from the applicant confirming some things, and then five weeks after that, well, start and then work the deadlines back from there. And so I think that's what the requests are to you.
Thank you. First check-in with the Commissioners, do you have any clarifying questions? No? Commissioners, you guys, you're good with what we've heard so far? Yes, so we are deciding on how to approach scheduling, which, to me, also involves what our schedule is going to be for being able to review everything that is presented. So that is one consideration that is running through my mind. But if we do schedule a hearing date first, then everybody has at least that as a common target, and working back from there. One idea? Yeah? Okay. Yes, yes. That is my second question, is what dates do we have available for doing this? Because we would need the whole entire day.
Thank you, Chair. So I know this happens later in the agenda, but assuming we're going along with the next year's schedule, this year wouldn't work. We have items already scheduled all the way through December. So just so that you folks know exactly what's coming up, so next meeting, there's a change in zoning, we're also planning on doing training for the Commission. The second meeting in November, we have, let me see here, the Grand Wailea is coming back to you, and there is also an SM1 for a Department of Water Supply project. In December, let me see here, we have another SM1 for the Kamala Grand, and we have the Kahana Sunset, which is next on your agenda, scheduled for that day. Because my understanding was maybe five or six months ago, the Commission requested that it be scheduled for that day. So that eliminates this year, which then leads us to January, and the meetings scheduled in January would be the 14th and the 28th. I'm a little hesitant to say the 14th because we don't know what's going to happen with Kahana Sunset. I prefer you leave that open. So I, to me, the earliest would be January 28th. After that would be February 11th and February 25th.
And then our South Maui Community Plan, we asked to go through the end of February. Was that time extension request?
Correct. So we've submitted a time extension request through the end of February, so February 28th, I think, is the date that we have, and that has not gone through Counsel yet, but it will.
Okay. And just based on past experience, we are probably going to need more than one meeting for this.
I would assume so. You know, what's the most recent, would be say the Grand Wailea. I don't even know how many meetings you folks had on that.
I can tell you.
It's been many. Okay. So we would probably need at least two meetings in a row would be ideal, so we're not, you know, so at least we can keep one train running to concentrate on.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, so if you want to play it safe, then I guess that would be February, right? Kahana Sunset, December, possibly two in January.
Okay.
So February 11th would be the first meeting in February.
Okay. And then we could hold the second February meeting also, just in case, at this point, right?
Correct.
Do we have time enough to plan for that?
Correct.
Okay. Commissioners, comments, thoughts? Sound good? Okay. All right. So, yeah, go ahead.
February, we will be, the end of February, we will be done with South Maui.
In theory, yes.
And we are not starting another community plan.
Good question.
No. It will, it will be several months, perhaps years, before you see another community plan. So, yeah, it takes time. We're starting a Central Maui Community Plan, but not, not quite even, not even remotely close to coming to you yet. Yeah.
Yes.
And we have to write a plan, so.
Okay. So then, I guess the, another idea then is to do this after we are done with the community plan, so that we can have a full day meeting and not have to finish at 2:00. Like, we could actually meet 9:00 to 5:00, like we used to, for this, and then maybe not spill over too far. Commissioner Ward?
Question, Chair. Thanks. Do we really think we're going to go through February for South Maui Community Plan?
Like, do we think we'll actually end there?
Meaning, is it really going to take that long?
Based on the pace that we are going, I think it is possible.
We really only have maps, which I know, and it'll be a challenge, but.
Director?
Yeah, just to add, you have also the actions as well, which could take quite a bit of time, and you'll have to go back through and reconsider everything, make sure that you're all on the same page before you submit it. So, yeah, I think February is likely, all the way through. And then also, Chair, just reminder to speak as close to the mic as possible, I saw Bianca straining a little bit.
Sorry.
No worries.
Yeah, because we only also, we only have one meeting in December, because the second one would fall on Christmas Eve.
You don't want to do Christmas Eve? Meet at my house.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
In the closet.
Yeah, yeah. We can do a Christmas Eve party still. That will not be broadcast.
No.
Yeah, so, yes, we don't actually have many, much time for South Maui Community Plan to get through everything. Commissioner Lindsay?
For me, for February 11th, I will be leaving early, so it'll be a short meeting for me, if that matters with Coram.
Which it's possible. Vice Chair?
Yeah, so I think I term out in March. Since I've went through all these, it would be good to do this before.
Okay.
So if we can do February.
February? Okay. All right.
That's what I was going to say, because I believe Commissioner Hipoleto.
Yes, also.
Yeah.
And then we might have Coram issues again.
That's true. You guys get 10 years now.
They can.
They can? No, he, well, yes. Yes. Okay. Well, okay, so, keeping us all online, we will aim for February, it sounds like, where everybody is. Yep. And give Vice Chair and Commissioner Hipoleto their chance to carry this all the way through. Okay. So if we have the first meeting in February as our first hearing date, then we are working backwards from there. The pre-hearing motions. Mr. Hopper, yes?
So one of the things raised in the applicant's schedule is, which is something the Commission can do, is sort of a clarification of issues. I think interveners, I'm not sure about interveners' position on that. I think they sort of said it was an incomplete list, so I don't know if applicants, if, Chair, I don't know if you want to have applicants and interveners speak on, I don't know if there's some agreement that they could, we could come up with a list at this point of the issues to be decided. If the parties think they don't need to do that, that's a position, if the parties think they can come together and sort of come up with a list. I don't know if some of the public trust items would be added to this at the intervenor's suggestion, but I don't know if the parties want to have a comment on that, because that was a part of the, you know, proposed decision, and if you want to do that, I think it's within your right, but you may want to hear from the parties on that particular issue, if you have that question. I would have that question.
Okay. Sure. How about we give each party five minutes?
I hope I don't take that long. But we took our list, or I took my list from the SMA statute. So I just pasted in there the considerations that the SMA says the Commission is to think about when approving or denying an SMA permit, and we listed them out. It seems to be, to me, to be the scope of the matters before the Commission, because it is an SMA permit. And I did that only so that we don't get distracted by other issues and considerations that aren't related to an SMA approval. And so I would suggest that the correct and the most fair process is to stick to what the statute says.
Thank you. Miss Isaki?
Thank you. Yes, we're in agreement that the statute applies, and certainly your rules, but then also as, when you're deciding the SMA permit, you're also acting as a public trustee with constitutional obligations. So we, you do need to also consider impacts to traditional customary practices, other public trust resources. So in addition, we would add constitutional issues. Also, I want to make sure that this is not lost, which is like in our proposed which is like in our proposed procedural order, one of the main things is we want an automatic extension of time if there are changes to project documents. Because we don't, we don't object that the project can be modified. We just want enough time to review them. Thank you.
Just to follow up on that, how much time are you thinking you would need to review?
We would need at least until the next meeting. Because we would have to talk to our clients, talk to our, talk to our experts and have people review what the new representations are. So if it's between the 11th and the 25th of February, it would be from one meeting to the next. And then if not, then the next one.
Okay.
So just Chair. So for now, I mean, I don't know if where this is potentially headed is that we have a draft order that circulated. And perhaps the Chair could be authorized to approve it consistent with the commission's wishes. Because I don't know if we'll necessarily hammer out language, specific language here. You can come up with your dates and things, but we're not going to write down the actual order here. But maybe that's where that's headed. And then intervenors can sort of discuss with applicant on what that language is. I don't want to make anything harder than it actually is, but I think we're, we're going to end up potentially with an order that hopefully the parties, at least, you know, the, the commission may vote on some things that one of the parties, you know, maybe doesn't like as much. But hopefully, we can come to agreement on the form of the order at some point. So that, that may be where we're headed. But I don't know if there's sort of language. I don't think that it would necessarily be difficult to put in language like that. And I think it's assumed that those public trust issues would potentially be discussed as part of the SMA permitting process. But maybe that's, that's where we're headed with this. But I, I just wanted you to hear from the parties as far as what they thought of as far as a, if you're going to set sort of that, that list of issues ahead of time, what that would look like.
Yes. I think we would need to have that set at the very beginning.
Yeah, I think that's part of your order. So I mean, I think you're going down the items. And at the end, you may vote to say motion to whatever it is you want to do with those details as part of your motion. And then the final form of the order could maybe be approved by the, by the chairperson after the parties have a chance to agree on that form. Or the chair resolve any disputes as to the form of the order ultimately. But unless you want to have another meeting between now and then, but you may not want to do that if it's, if it's just the issue of, of putting in writing what the commission ends up deciding.
Yes. We can avoid another meeting on this. That would be ideal. Okay. So noted on that. The other dates we have to lay out are, well, we have to decide on allowing discovery or not.
Well, I think maybe what you could do is set a deadline for the filing of discovery motions or something like that. I think unlike courts, this, well, I'll, I'll read the rule because I had just read it. But it says, Rule 1220167, "The parties to a contested case may request discovery in a manner consistent with the provisions of Rules 26 through," and I listed the other rules, Hawaii Rules of Civil Procedure. "The hearing officer will allow utilization of the discovery process where appropriate and where such would not unreasonably delay the proceedings." So in the past, the commission as a whole has considered discovery motions. I, I think the commission could delegate to you, Chair, the decisions on any potential discovery motions. But they, they, they would have to be considered and acted upon by a, a hearing officer or if, if delegated by the commission, potentially the chair. I, I know the intervenors have said they want, another thing they want in this order is a, an additional filing by the applicants clarifying what their, what the, the plan is. And, and then they want a discovery to be, you know, within five weeks of that time. They also talked about filing a motion for discovery shortly after this proceeding. So I don't know if, I mean, that would have to potentially be a subsequent ruling for either party if they request discovery by either this commission or the chair on a motion. You could potentially set a deadline for discovery motions so to make sure they're not too, so close to the hearing date that they can't be meaningfully acted upon. So perhaps that's an option. But you don't have, that I, that I've seen a specific discovery motion before you. So I think, you know, intervenors talked about filing that and you could potentially have a, have a filing date for that. And I don't know if applicant has any position on, on discovery. I don't think they, they had talked about it in their, their, their arguments, but you could, you could ask them their position on that. But, and, and chat with the parties on when they think a reasonable discovery deadline, filing deadline would be if you're going to have that hearing in February. So I think those are potential options to have in the order.
Okay. So I guess my question to both parties right now is, well, for the applicant, based on the schedule that you put in writing to us, do you have any changes based on February hearing date?
No, Chair, I have no changes based on a February hearing date. We took all of our dates and worked backwards. So I would take that date and work backwards. In terms of the other procedural question that Mr. Hopper raised, namely, would the commission or this, the chair hear any motion or prehearing motion related to discovery or otherwise that was non-dispositive? That is the process that we followed in Wailea 670. And the chair at the time, Pete Anis-Lacosta, heard and decided prehearing motions that didn't involve a disposition of matter. I think that's an appropriate way to address that, that here so that we don't take up commission hearing time leading up to February 11th.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Isaki, same questions?
Yeah, we don't have any change to our proposed. The only thing, I guess, well, would just be that, yeah, we would want, we would file that motion for discovery right after this.
Okay. And I guess I'm fine taking up prehearing motions on my own. I got lots of time. Yeah, I know. I know. I, I would rather do it outside of this meeting because in the interest of being able to hear all the other items that are coming before us. Spare the rest of the commissioners. Thank you. Okay. So then now we need due dates for all of these items.
Chair, do you, do you want to have a due date for discovery?
Yeah. Yes. So I guess if the applicant say they can do it within a week from now, we can go with that. Ms. Isaki?
Sorry, Chair, can you, is that for due date for the motion for discovery or a due date for all discovery?
Oh, motion for discovery, you said, right? You said motion for discovery, you could do.
Correct, yes. Motion, yes.
I, I think we're talking about the deadline to file a motion for the discovery. I think the chair would have to rule on that and potentially establish dates when things has, would have to be produced. But I think we're talking about a, a day for either party to file a discovery motion because, again, discovery is permissive. And, and it's up to the presiding officer to decide on that. So, yeah, I, I think it's, and you can check with applicants. I don't know if they plan on filing any types of discovery motions. But, yeah, if you're going to put in the order that discovery motions must be filed by other party within a week of whatever the, it's going to take some time to draft this order, so I'm trying to think of that. If, if it just gets filed, then there's not a big deal and you just establish that date. But if the parties have a comment on, on the actual day, they want to have the, the deadline for filing a motion, I think it'd be good and you can incorporate that into any potential order.
Okay. Comments? No? Okay. Yeah, I guess looking at the timeline provided by the applicant, I would ask for any, the last filings to be two weeks prior to the hearing, just to give us a little bit of time to sift through everything and prepare. And I think for the intervenors, having a February date gives you plenty of time for everything on your list. And I believe you said February as a potential hearing date anyway. So. Yeah, I'm fine taking up all the prehearing motions outside of this, our regular commission meetings.
Just as a note, the, I'm noticing this now. Again, the applicant's proposal was prehearing motions shall be filed three weeks prior to hearing. Presuming that would not include necessarily discovery motions that you want, would, would the parties be filing that, that earlier? Just because I don't know if three weeks is enough time for the parties to settle all those discovery issues. And so I'm assuming everyone would do that a little earlier. So we could maybe add a specific discovery date separate from that. So just as a clarification.
Sure. I, I can clarify that. So, so we didn't provide a separate discovery motion date because discovery is discretionary. It's not, not the default in a contested case hearing because you're proceeding on an application and the records that are with the department. And so there's really generally a waste of time and resources. But if, if the commission's pleasure is to have the parties submit any motion for discovery within one week of today and for the chair to rule on those, we're, we're agreeable.
Okay. Questions, commissioners? Okay. Okay.
And then what? Do you want to have a week after the filing of the discovery motions for responses? And then, and then three days after the responses, reply time, something like that?
Yeah.
Just to make it clear for everybody, because there might be responses to the motion and then a reply to the response. And then you'd have everything in front of you to rule on the discovery motion, which would start the discovery process potentially. And, yeah, you have to figure out what you're going to do there.
Okay. Mr. Diaz, are you getting this all down? Okay. Okay, good. Okay. Okay. So do we need a motion for all of this?
Yeah, you'd want to have a motion and a second. And we'd need five votes for the commission to establish this, this schedule. So, yeah, you would want to, that's sort of what we're working through. So it seems, I mean, I don't know what you want to do because there's, there's different requests here. So I'll leave it to the move on to decide that. But you'd want a motion and a second. The details of these, these issues set forth in that motion. And then the, potentially have one of the parties draft that motion, circulate to the other party and then submit it to you as chair for approval of that motion. And as part of your motion, authorize the chair to act as presiding officer prior to the hearing to hear and determine any non-dispositive motions that are needed prior to the hearing date.
So if somebody wants to craft that, I'll happily be the first to go for it. But I would ask someone to draft that for me.
Staff?
Okay. This is not an attorney, so this is kind of hard to, okay. You're not to help me with this, so.
I, I, I can do that. I just need to know what you guys want. Do you want, you want to have the hearing date at the first meeting in February? So whatever date that was.
Yep.
And then you want to have discovery motions shall be filed no later than next Tuesday?
Correct.
Yep.
I imagine you'd want to clarify that service by email is permitted. So you don't have to have the paper service number of copies. I mean, I think you would want a filing with the, I don't know. Is, is the department able to accept documents by email and have them considered filed, stamped and made part of the record? Or do you want hard copies also?
We can do it by email.
Okay. Yeah, so I just clarify that, that will allow parties to, the main thing is that parties are able to meet deadlines by email service to one another. Do the parties have any objection to that?
None.
Okay.
Objection.
Okay. Thank you. And then, and then I guess, yeah, so discovery motions need to be filed by next Tuesday by close of business, I guess, 4:30 PM. And that will be, that's by email service. Responses to those will be due, what, a week from then? And then replies three days from then? And then I'll need guidance on the rest because, again, applicant, that's, that's the stuff I heard from the chair at this point. So applicant and intervenors have disagreements on the rest of it. And so I don't want to tell you what, what would be the next step. So you may need to resolve what you want to do for the, for the next item. So I don't want to, I'm not a commissioner, so I can't decide that. I can sort of put your words and your, the chair's thoughts or other members' thoughts into a motion that could be proposed, but I don't want to insert myself in that process.
Okay. I think we said that the final form for the issues to be considered by the commission would be agreed upon by the parties with approval by the chair?
Yeah, they were, they're, I was proposing that sort of hoping that the parties could agree on any required supplemental language dealing with public trust items. Do you think the parties, do you think the party, parties, would you be able to do that? Are there objections to working out that language and having that in some sort of final order that's approved by the chair?
I, I certainly don't have any objection to trying to work it out and, and otherwise having any disagreement be resolved by the chair. The, the public trust obligations, you know, I agree and I think are incorporated into the statutory considerations. I get a little nervous when I hear a phrase like, "in all other constitutional concerns." As that seems pretty open-ended and limitless, whether it's properly before the commission or not. So that wouldn't be something I could accept. But subject to that bookend, that I know I can't go as far as, then I'm happy to try to work it out and leave it to the chair to resolve otherwise.
Thank you. This is Bianca. I'm, from what I'm hearing, it sounds like if we could just agree, it's the statute, it's the, the constitutional, the public trust parts of the constitution and of course also the traditional customary rights.
So, so perhaps.
Yes. Sounds like perhaps. Thank you.
So, so, yeah, perhaps we have, we go over orally this, clarify it openly and then have the parties submit their own proposed orders to the chair. And then the chair can decide the final form of this prehearing order. The, the only thing in the meantime, if we're looking at next Tuesday for a filing deadline, that'll sort of be done orally before that motion's potentially, before that order is potentially finalized. But other than that, I think there's plenty of time for the chair to look over those issues and, and finalize them. But, you know, I, I, I think that's potentially a way forward. So as you continue on, you make these decisions. Hopefully, the, the, the department and the parties are clear enough to draft proposed orders to, to file them with the chair and the chair can decide on the final form. So I don't know if you want to continue proceeding that way. But for that one, it sounds like the parties can each put their own proposed language and the chair can sort of sort that out with, I can, I can assist in sort of going through that, depending on what you would like.
Thank you. Okay. Does that get us closer to crafting a motion?
And then the other items would be potentially clarification by the applicant on their plan. And then deadlines for filing other motions prior to the hearing, whether it's, you know, a certain period of time before that or, or, or what. So those are items that are listed in the party's motions. So you have to sort of sort that out. Basically, how far in advance of the hearing do you want the final motions and then responses to those?
Commissioner Lindsay, you had a question?
Did you, you mentioned two weeks before the hearing.
Did you? You mentioned two weeks before the hearing already, right?
Yes. Okay, and then for the applicant to clarify their plan, it sounds like they can do that immediately, but yes.
Is it possible to extend
Oh.
that filings a little bit longer because we have a lot to read?
Sure, one, two. So three weeks?
Yes.
Three weeks? Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that's good with me.
Yeah, so that would be phrased as non-discovery pre-hearing motions, something like along those lines.
Can I maybe just ask a clarification on that? When you say last filings, do you mean all exhibits, witness lists, everything, or just motions?
Exhibits, witness lists, everything that we will need to study before the first February date.
You got it. I believe that would be one twenty-one.
And just to be clear, how how is the turnaround time within the department to us?
From the time of us receiving it to returning it back to you quickly within a day?
By email.
Yeah, we'll do it all by.
Yeah, this is by email service that hopefully won't have to scan anything and upload it. Hopefully, they can get the emails together and forward it to you as a group.
We will have a strong two weeks to read.
And then you'd want to establish the response date. So three weeks prior, you would need the both, you're looking to have both pre-hearing motions and pre-hearing witness exhibit lists, et cetera. And then normally, you would have a chance of responses to those motions. So that's three weeks prior. And then you want to have responses to that due a week after that, and then replies three days after that, something like that, or or establish what you're comfortable with. But those are the three different things you usually have. Usually, there's a chance for a party to respond to a motion. And then a chance for the the move on to respond to the response. So.
Commissioner Ward, then Commissioner Lindsay.
Thank you, Chair. Knowing that there's potentially a lot to go over, could we? And I guess this would be to both parties, could we receive hypothetically, the witness list and whatever existing exhibits there are? So we could at least start looking at some of that? Or is it better for us to get everything all at once? There may be a question to.
Well, I mean, you can have, you can have, you can establish different deadlines if you want. If you want to have the exhibits and and witness list. I mean, I guess your exhibit list and witness list could turn on some of the motions too. You know, someone could make a motion that, oh, you shouldn't consider this or that because it's irrelevant or something like that. So it might make sense to have the motions due before the witness and exhibit list, but that's sort of sort of up to you. So you can have different dates for motions, responses and replies, and the witness and exhibit list. That's theoretically possible.
So Chair, with that in mind, I would say it makes more sense to get the motions earlier than the three weeks. So that we have ample opportunity to go through that. And then as Pope Council just explained, if there is reactions, responses that we have at the time. But I'm new to this, so I could be wrong. But to me, it sounds like it should be sooner.
Yeah, you can set a deadline for for pre-hearing motions, but I can assure you, you're going to get motions before that deadline. So maybe the earlier you set that deadline, the better. I think you're correct there. But you're definitely going to get motions before that deadline.
Thank you.
Okay, so maybe that puts. I should get calendars out, but motions sooner than three weeks then to allow time for responses and replies. Because we'll have to sift through that also.
So you're saying motions three weeks prior to the hearing, responses are one week after that, replies three days after that, and then witness exhibit lists on a different day?
Yeah, sounds like it.
You should probably push it back a few more days because you just cut off the second thing you said into week and a half. So you're at three and a half weeks before four weeks before, then three weeks, then three days. So that gives us two weeks, four days.
So could I just potentially propose January first?
Okay.
I appreciate the cut and dry, straight date, instead of the backtracking.
Director?
Since January first is a holiday, I would recommend not doing that day. I'm not sure what day of the week that is, but I'm certain we aren't working on it.
That's a Wednesday.
New year, new day.
Yeah. Good point out.
What if we said January sixth, that is the first Monday in January?
So this would be for non-discovery pre-hearing motions, January sixth. Okay?
Okay.
Responses as well.
Yeah, and then responses a week after. Rebuttal three days after that. We can stay with that in that case.
Sorry, if I can clarify, and these are just three calendar days and one week calendar days. We're not going to be excluding weekends or anything.
Oh, Mr. Hopper?
I guess if the day falls on weekend, it would be the subsequent Monday. I guess that's the only thing we clarify. But yeah, I think there'd be calendar days. And if the last day, I think Commission, I believe, has that in its rules as a default, but we could clarify that as part of the order. If the deadline falls on a weekend day, it will be pushed to the next Monday, or the next Monday. And if the next Monday is a holiday, it's to the next day. So basically, the day, the next day that the county is open.
Yeah, I think there's something where it's business days if you're shorter than some amount of time.
Yeah, generally speaking, if it's under thirty, it's business. But if it's over, then it's calendar. But if it's the sixth, then that would mean that, you know, the the week to respond would be the thirteenth following Monday and then sixteenth for the reply, which would be Thursday. Just trying to look at any holidays in January, like Martin Luther King Day, but.
Martin Luther King's on the twentieth, so it'd be after.
Okay, okay. So those days work then. Sixth, thirteenth, sixteenth.
Okay, so then do we want a different day for exhibits then?
If I may, on exhibits, those would typically be due much closer to the hearing date. I think Commissioner Lindsay had proposed three weeks. We, I think we'd proposed one. Commissioner Lindsay had proposed three. I can live with three.
On that, I think since we're getting the other information, we'll have this. And then I would prefer that closer to the date. So I think to one weeks, one, two weeks, two weeks would suffice.
Two weeks. Okay, two weeks.
So the twenty eighth?
Yes. Yeah. Okay.
So would we want, would we want the witness list at the same time? And I guess, and I'm new to going through this process? Or is that something we want to have one week before?
I think witness list goes together with the list of exhibits, but yeah. Okay, does that take care of everything we need for a motion?
Yes.
Okay, well, I guess parties, are you clear on these dates?
Yes, Chair.
Ms. Saki? Okay, thank you. Okay.
Maybe to avoid unnecessary work, it sounds like the only sort of thing the commission. I mean, I guess we could have both parties submit a proposed form of order. Hopefully, they are, they have these these deadlines in them that are that are clear enough and then their proposed language for the the issues to be resolved. I don't, I'm not seeing any other necessarily major areas of of resolution other than that, that the commission has has voted on with the deadlines. But I think the chair, part of your motion, so I think you could be looking for a motion to have these deadlines set and have the parties each send, unless the parties have a proposal that's different, that's simpler. But because we don't really have agreement on that language, we could have the parties submit the their proposed orders to the chair and have the chair, you know, rule on them. So I think what you'd have is a motion to to basically order that as the procedural schedule with the, you know, you could have Mr. Diaz clarify the dates. And that the parties will submit their proposed order, form of the order to the chair to finalize. And in addition to your your motion to set the schedule to allow the chair to hear and determine any any non-dispositive issues prior to the hearing. So I guess, Mr. Diaz, I don't know if you have, well, I'll let the chair take it from here unless she wants me to do more, but I think that's where we're at.
No, that sounds good to me. So Diaz, you got all that?
Yeah, I'm gonna have to, you know, get some of the language tightened down with you. But essentially, if I'm understanding this correctly, so next week, Tuesday, by close of business for thirty P M. Via email would be the deadline to file discovery motions. The response is due one week after that, replies to the responses three days after that. And then non-discovery pre-hearing motions are due on January sixth. There's one week to respond, which would be the thirteenth, and then replies are due three days after that, which would be the sixteenth. And then January twenty eighth is a deadline for exhibits and the witness lists. And then, of course, the 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 hearing would be on February eleventh.
And the parties will submit their proposed issues to be included. Their statement of issues in their proposed orders to the chair.
Sign pay, Mike?
Yes.
Sounded like there was like close to agreement on that today.
Yeah.
Issue, issue.
All right, do we, I mean, can the parties orally just say what they want to add to this now? And maybe we can can avoid that and just draft our own draft.
What I heard was that Bianca said the constitutional issues that she was talking about were strictly the public trust issue and which allay, which should allay Cal's fear that there was some open ended constitutional concerns. So with that limitation, I think there was agreement. Cal may correct.
No, Brian, I mean, if 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 the only statement is the statutory standards and the public trust, I think that that's straightforward, and we could agree to it.
Ms. Saki?
Thank you. Yeah, so we meant just to be very specific, and you should, Article eleven, section one is public trust and section nine is right to a clean and healthful environment. And then Article twelve, section seven is traditional customary rights protections. So those would be also, those are the issues we're thinking of adding also.
Yeah, so that was kind of my fear, right, is that, you know, we're not really just talking about the public trust and even about about PASH. You know, without getting into an extended legal discourse on it, that the constitutional provision is actionable through statutes, right? And so it's as defined by the legislature. It doesn't have these independent sort of concepts. And so I don't think that we're going to be able to reach agreement on the language today.
All right, yeah. So submit, how about have this, you've outlined the dates. Let's have the parties each send their proposed orders to the chair. You've got the dates, you've got the that schedule. Note that discovery is going to be due a day from today, even if the order is not finalized by then. I think the parties were aware of that. But I think we can have those, you know, the parties can submit their proposed language, the chair and myself can review that, chair can make a ruling on that, on that language. And then the rest of this, I think, is for the most part deadlines. So hopefully, that's pretty easy for the parties to get that down. But why don't we have that as part of the motion as well as the as well as the authority of the chair to determine all non-dispositive motions?
Chair, if I may?
Go ahead.
The two things that we also asked for in our procedural order was clarification by applicant on their plan, and I raised today why we're confused about a few things. And then also just the automatic extension if there are changes to the plan going forward.
Okay, I guess we can add that, but the applicant said they would confirm their plan within a week from now.
Well, I think we did in our papers, that the application that's been submitted is the application that was heard at the public hearing. Well aware of that, examined their witness on it. So that that the idea of a question on that, to me, seems not genuine. The idea of an automatic extension, if if we make any changes. So, for example, if the commission at a hearing says we're concerned about this area based on the testimony, we'd like no development in there. And then we automatically extend the hearing to the next available date, that that seems absurd to me. So we would not agree to that. And there's nothing in the rules that contemplates such a procedure.
Mr. Hopper?
Just for the parties, would it be possible, if there is such a change at the time, the intervenors could make a motion to extend the time to respond to that, to consider and, you know, make their arguments at that time that, look, this is a change that will have different different impacts in some manner. And so if that comes up, I think you could make a oral motion at the hearing or along those lines to request that extension. I don't know if that's something the commission could potentially consider. I mean, it may be something you need to put off to the next meeting, or it might be something that can be addressed in a shorter time, or something that the commission does not feel would merit additional time. But I think, I think within the existing rules, you could agree to, you could deal with potential arguments of prejudice to, you know, based on changes in the project.
May I quickly?
Mr. Bellberry?
Yeah, you already have a motions deadline. So, and again, motions can be brought at any time prior to that. So this is probably something that doesn't need to be given special, given a special date or consideration. If they feel like something changed that needs to be addressed, they can file a motion prior to the motion.
And I think that if there is a change that happens after that, though, I think you could potentially look for some type of relief at that time if the commission wants to consider it, if it was not at a if there was something that happened afterwards. But I'm saying that during the hearing, I think you have a process where you can utilize to to potentially help mitigate any sorts of you know, due process issues that are raised by the parties.
Without having to lay that out now.
Potentially. I mean, that's up to the commission if it wants to have something in the order about that now, too.
Thank you. Yes, I think we could live with that. Thank you, Mr. Hopper.
Okay. Ms. Sherlinsy?
Confused, and it sounds like it's going to be really extra long by allowing that. I'm just, I'm just.
You don't have to do anything at this time. And that would be a decision that the chair and you could make in the future if at a hearing something, I mean, it could happen for a variety of reasons, and both parties or all three parties may have an objection at some point in the hearing to say, hey, this is a problem, and you can consider that. I'm just, my point is that there's not necessarily you don't necessarily have to decide all of those things now. There's good to decide some of these things now, but you don't necessarily have to decide all of them now. That was sort of the point I'm making. Sorry, this is this is, lawyers love this stuff, I guess. Nobody likes lawyers.
No, I think.
This is, yeah, sorry.
My concern is it's probably going to happen, very likely. And so I would rather address it now than extend out while we're. it now than extend out while we're sitting in five hours and then three concerns.
Okay, well, would you propose some kind of timeline then? So I'm wondering, you know, we're sort of in like, what-if land, because what if it's like a small?
I would say it's something substantive.
Right.
I mean, if it's a change of, you moved a line to feed.
It would be substantive.
Right, that's also subjective.
You're limiting yourself now by, I think, by putting it in that order. At the time, you can look at it and consider it under your existing rules. That is my only point that I'm trying to make.
I would be wary of saying at this point, any change that's made to the plans automatically pushes us further, because like, yeah. So, from what I understand from Mr. Hopper, we have the authority and ability to act if there is a substantive change as we deem it. We can say, we need to hold on this so that everybody can review.
Push it forward.
Otherwise, we can say this is manini and we can just keep going as we are.
Through your regular hearing process, I think you have pretty broad discretion on how you want to conduct the hearing. You have to provide for due process for the parties, you have to allow relevant evidence, which is a pretty broad standard, but you've got some flexibility on how you can conduct the actual hearing. And I think we're having the ability to deal with that. And a lot of these issues are to sort of get the parties on the same page prior to the hearing so that you get what you need at the start of the hearing to be prepared to have a good hearing. This is not necessarily all to limit what the Commission can do at the hearing if it feels at the time it should have a process done a certain way.
Okay. Well, I guess to that note, I would ask my Commissioners, you know, on this topic of, you know, what issues are we gonna be addressing? You know, like, the SMA criteria or statute versus extending it further into the other articles of the state constitution?
To an extent, you don't have much of a choice on that. The law's the law.
Right, like, have to. Are we, I guess, are we broadening the scope beyond just the SMA criteria into?
I think you can consider those additional, those additional issues, but they would have to be limited to within the scope of the SMA, you know, rules. But yeah, those have to be part of that. Again, I think that's why I'd like to see the language from the parties. If you want more input from the Commission on that, I think that's fine, too. But without seeing the language, I think we're looking at potentially qualifying language. It's not, you know, it's not the Constitution out of context, it's within the context of the development and the SMA permit to be heard and determined by the Commission. So I think there's language to be put in there, and it's going to have to be, it's gonna be what the law is anyway. So, but yes, because, because you've got the statute and, you know, the Hawaii State Constitution applies to your decision-making, there are going to be aspects of that that you're going to need to consider, but within the context of the SMA permitting process.
So within the scope of the SMA permitting process is what you're dealing with? Within the scope of the SMA permitting process is what we're dealing with? And if those statutes concern those SMA criteria, then it's there. So that doesn't need to be addressed, it sounds like, because we are looking at SMA.
I mean, the intervenors want additional language. We can certainly look at the additional language clarifying the constitutional responsibilities of the Commission, which it certainly has, and see if that's something, you know, how to phrase that. If you want to work it out now, we can. My suggestion was to have that submitted, see, because it's kind of a difficult thing to articulate orally without having it written down, in my opinion, but we can continue to discuss it. Or have the parties both submit that to the Chair and have the Chair decide that. But if we want to discuss it more, we certainly can.
Chair, we should like more homework?
I don't have enough homework for this. Commissioner DeGosse?
Thank you, Chair. I'm wondering if the applicant could just expand a little bit on what maybe this, what examples where the statute might not cover those public trust or cultural issues?
Happy to quickly address that, Commissioner DeGosse. I'm sensitive to the time, too, and you guys have spent a lot of time.
I apologize, but I was.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, I would like to hear from both, but yeah, where, where there is an overlap or there is overlap. Thank you.
Happy to, happy to do my part in that. So from, from a statutory standpoint, and I think the way that Mr. Hopper phrased the scope is actually spot on. All of this is within the context of the SMA. So for example, if we think about traffic as an impact, traffic may be caused by a project, but unless that traffic has a substantial adverse ecological or environmental effect, it's not a basis to deny an SMA permit. It's straight from topless. If it does, then you look at whether that impact can be mitigated to the extent practical. When you look at the constitutional issues that are incorporated, we look at them through that same lens. So I had mentioned public trust, and the public trust is of course a part of all decision-making. In this case, it's within the context of the SMA. What is the impact to the S, the public trust by this project within the context of the SMA? My comment on the, on the constitutional provision was not that the statute excluded considerations of a clean and healthful environment, that specific statute that Miss Isaki had raised, but that the right to a clean and healthful environment, in the terms of the statute, the text of it says, as defined by the legislature. So in other words, the question from a constitutional standpoint on that provision is, is the statute at issue a law relating to environmental quality? And if so, then what does it say? And there's a whole body of case law. So rather than the constitutional provision being this amorphous right to a clean and healthful environment, it's a right as defined by statute. So it goes the other way, incorporating the statute rather than the statute excluding the Constitution. And that's why I paused on that particular language, because as phrased by Miss Isaki, it would seem limitless. So I go back to Mr. Hopper's suggestion. I think that if we, the parties submit their suggested scope to the Chair, the Chair can make a determination. If the Chair feels like she would like to bring this back to the Commission, if there's some substantial dispute over that, certainly we're amenable to that as well.
Chair?
Commissioner DeGosse?
Yeah, the question was actually meant for the intervener, but I appreciate, I know I said applicant, but I appreciate both inputs. So if, Miss Isaki, if you can address sort of your concerns where the statutes may not cover some of these issues.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, briefly, so there is that narrow issue that H2 raised, but, so quoting from case law, public trusts arises out of a constitutional mandate. It's not, it at all times forms the outer boundary of permissible government action. It's like, it's overarching over the statute. It imposes affirmative duties on you as Commissioners as opposed to like, well, just looks like it kind of follows a lot, but like, you actually, it imposes like obligations on you and how you treat the evidence. So that's very important. That's the public trust statute. Also, which is, which also extends to also how you protect and preserve traditional customary practices, also under the Constitution. For instance, like, you have to make specific findings. What are the practices? How are they impacted? How, what are the feasible protections for them? We might have heard this language before, and that comes out of the Constitution and also some of the other case law that adopts that. In regard to the specific language around the right to clean and healthful environment as defined by the Coastal Zone Management Act and like, and other statutes, in particular, we want to make sure that that is, that is considered in regard to standing, because frankly, that can be raised at any time, and we want to make sure that we track that language so that we create a record, just in case this goes someplace else. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Mr. Billbury?
Yeah, the confusion I see here is that they're talking about standards that are applic, that would be applicable to an appeal from the grant of an SMA permit. The public trust doctrine is not an evidentiary standard, which is what I heard Miss Isaki say, and which is apparently the manner in which they're trying to impose it on these proceedings. I'm sure that if this SMA permit is granted, they will appeal that. Then they can raise these issues. Public trust doctrine, clean and healthy environment, and the other constitutional mandates, which they are, I think, I'm gonna have to agree with Cal, are overreachingly trying to apply to the consideration of a discretionary permit rather than a violation of those particular constitutional provisions, which they will raise if you grant this permit. And then at that time, these constitutional concerns that are being articulated by Miss Isaki would come into play.
My question, maybe to Corp. Consul, is, well, maybe two questions. Would this, if we include these statutes in our review and decision, does that make some kind of precedent for all future SMA? And then, my second question would be, why would we entertain any considerations outside of the SMA statute when we are deciding on SMA permit?
Well, the Hawaii Supreme Court has said that with respect to a lot of, with certain discretionary permits, that the Planning Commission has public trust responsibilities to review the impacts of the project with respect to certain resources, cultural practices, and other issues that stem from the Constitution. Substantively speaking, I think whether you have this or you have that additional language, which I think you could find a way to add, the issue's going to be, someone's going, a party's gonna try to present evidence at the hearing, and there might be an objection to say this is not relevant evidence for X, Y, Z reason. And presumably, the evidence is going to be on somehow the, about the impacts of the project and how they relate to these issues, and you'll have to decide whether to allow the evidence or not. The standard for allowing evidence in a contested case hearing is pretty broad. It's much broader than the standards for the Hawaii Courts or Hawaii Rules of Evidence. So I don't know, if I'm being frank, if in the long run, this is going to necessarily significantly impact the evidence that you're going to consider or not consider in the hearing. So I mean, I do think you can come up with language that those additional constitutional considerations can be considered. I think, I think in a lot of ways, they do have to be considered through the SMA process. So that's why I wanted to sort of see the language. I can give you guidance. If you want to have the language drafted now and look at it, we can do that. If you want to have the language proposed by the parties and have the whole Commission review, we can do that. In the end, you're going to, as a Commission, need to decide during the hearing that whether you're going to hear the evidence or not, or say this is irrelevant or not. And substantively, there's not a lot of evidence unless it's unduly repetitive or irrelevant that you would be excluding. So again, this is where that could potentially come to be involved in the case, but substantively, you're still going to have to make a ruling later on the admissibility of evidence and, you know, the, this scope of the hearing. And again, those are generally relatively broad, because the statute tells the Commission that the Hawaii Rules of Evidence don't apply, and you have to consider evidence that is, unless it's irrelevant, unduly repetitious, and for reasons that are separate from the Hawaii Rules of Evidence. It's a much broader scope. So I wanted to sort of keep that in mind as we continue to spend time on this issue. I think that we can see from the parties their proposed language and make a decision on it. And if I'm being frank, I don't necessarily see in the future that it's going to severely or significantly restrict the Commission's ability to hear the evidence that it deems relevant in the case.
Okay. Well, Commissioners, are you okay with me just deciding, both parties submitting their case in writing, and I'll decide?
Thank you, Chair.
Okay?
We have a motion.
Yes. Which I think we've.
That's, we got it all sourced out.
Yeah. Hopefully. You catch all that?
Okay, let me try to, like, bring 45 minutes of conversation. Okay, my understanding is there's a motion on the floor. Gosh, it concludes.
Yeah, I will push it away.
So he's working towards that.
Motion on the floor, but based on what you've heard, you're sort of giving the language for someone to make a motion, right?
Okay, so I'm just gonna sort of like, yeah, can you, I mean, I have the dates as of far, but.
I'll try to do this. So the hearing will be on February, do you have that date again?
February 11th.
So the hearing is scheduled for February 11th. All discovery-related motions must be filed no later than next Tuesday, which is the October 29th, 4:30 p.m. close of business. And then, responses to those discovery motions is due no later than Tuesday, November 5th. And then, replies are due three days from that date. So that would be Friday, November 8th. And so that's the discovery-related motions. The both parties will submit their proposed orders to the chairperson on this item and will include their proposed issues in their language dealing with the additional issues discussed. Service will be allowed electronically by email. You need to email to all the parties at their known email addresses and also do the, are we clear on the department's email address for filing of documents? Do we know the best email address for that, so the parties know where that should be directed to? We could put that in the order?
Should be planning. Yeah, planning@mauicounty.gov.
Planning@mauicounty.gov. I think the parties are pretty familiar with emailing in documents, but hopefully that's, that's clear. The deadline for that is, oh, no, for the order, yes, that's right. Parties, when do you think you could send your proposed orders in to the department so the Chair can review them?
Can we do it in a week at the same time as the discovery motion?
Okay with us.
Okay. Just a thought, if you want to talk to each other about how that would look, that would be great, and figure it out. But if you cannot, fine.
It's a good thought. We'll make our best effort.
Yeah, just, that's in, sorry. And then, the, remind me again, on the, you wanted January 6th to be the deadline for filing of all pre-hearing motions?
Yes.
Responses due one week after that?
Yes.
And replies due three days after that?
Yes.
And when were the witness and exhibit lists due of the parties?
January 28th.
January 28th?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then there was the issue the intervenors raised of a date, I don't know if it's a date for the applicant to submit its project plans, or if at this point, they've stated orally that it's consistent with their final EA. And so I don't know if we're looking for any formal, more formal submittal on that. I don't know what your thoughts are on that. To me, I think that's the only remaining item, other than to generally authorize the Chair in addition to finalizing this order with the, having the Chair with the authority to hear and rule on any non-dispositive motions prior to the hearing. That should be in the DNO as well. But are we still out on the, any requirement for the applicant to file some sort of clarification on the project plan, or you feel that's not necessary? That's up to you. The parties had disputed that issue.
Well, I heard that it was the plans in the final EA, but.
Correct.
Chair, if I can just, just clarify, in their filing, they said that they are, they modified it in response. they modified it in response to their preservation plan and other commitments. The preservation plan was submitted after the EA. So there is no other change to any of the documents or any of the project support except for, I guess, that preservation plan? I just want confirmation on this because it's confusing.
It's the application that was presented at the public hearing on this matter. I believe that was in March of this year. That is the plan that was in the final EA.
Just to make it all documented in writing and hopefully non-disputable, could this be provided also by next Tuesday?
That's fine, Chair.
Okay.
Okay, so do the parties have those items down for their ability to submit their proposed scheduling order to the chair? Well, submit it to the department, and then I guess, I don't know if we want to have Chair, them have your email or have it submitted to the department, forwarded to you. We can discuss. And then if you need to have the parties get together for any sort of additional things, we could have sort of a Zoom meeting separately with them. Or I could just discuss, and you can issue whatever orders you need through, you know, using Planning Department clerical staff.
Yeah, submit to the department, the department can forward to me, and then we can have a Zoom.
Okay. All right. Is that sufficient clarity for the parties to draft those procedural orders? Again, this is being recorded, so you can probably fast-forward to this point, minute meeting, and hopefully it'll be clear enough, but.
I'm good, Mike.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
So I guess we need a motion in a second to do that.
So moved.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Ward, seconded by Commissioner Lindsay. Would you like to speak to the motion?
No.
Okay.
Everything's good.
Okay. Any discussion from the Commissioners? Just checking, procedural, seeing none. All right, let us call for a vote. Commissioner Lindsay.
Aye.
Commissioner Ward.
Aye.
Commissioner DeCos.
Aye.
Vice Chair Thompson.
Aye.
Chair Thayer.
Aye.
It's five. Okay, and hopefully this sets us up well for our next communication item. Yes, let's take a five-minute break and see everybody back at 12:40. Welcome back, everybody, and good afternoon this time to our regular Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, October 22nd, 2024. We are about to start on Item C2. Mr. Diaz, please read us into the record.
Thank you, Chair. Item C2 is a pre-hearing, sorry, I want to make sure my mic was on. It's a pre-hearing conference for notice of appeal. That's A P P L 2023 0002 in the matter of Kahana Sunset Building F repairs and Building A emergency repairs issued by Ms. Kathleen Ross Oakey, Planning Director, and appealed by Appellants Surf Rider Foundation, Nahapai, Vavai, Ula Ula, Malu o Kahalavai, Kainisiki, and Tiare Lawrence's consolidated notice of appeal from Director's Decisions. And I won't read the rest of it, but that would be the item, Chair.
Okay, thank you. And could the parties please introduce themselves?
Yaki Saki and Ryan Hurley via Zoom for Nahapai, Vavai, Ula Ula for all of the appellants.
Cute.
Cal Chipchase and Killa Whitaker for the applicant.
Deputy Corporations Counsel Brian Bilberry for Maui County.
Thank you.
Chair, this one may be a little different. So if you want to, I think there's several requests from the parties. And in this case, the, I believe the appellants are initiating the proceeding. So you may have them go first with their presentation. If they could address, I guess, all of the things they would like from the commission at this point, that would, I think, be helpful. And then the applicant can talk about all the things they would like from the commission. And then the, and then the county can talk about all the things they would like the commission to do. So just a note, there were a couple of things filed that I want to make sure that everyone got access to. Hopefully, the department confirmed this. But there was a filing, there was a filing, it's correct. There's a filing on the agenda, appellant's motion to allow discovery and issuance of subpoenas. There was also County of Maui memorandum in opposition to that that was filed. Make sure you have that document as well as, I believe, earlier today or yesterday, the applicant filed the document as well. Do you, I wanted to make sure all the Commissioners have those three documents. And I want to make sure I'm not missing anything, but other than the appeal and those other items. But for today's hearing, there's those items, I believe. So I just want to make sure everyone has had access to them and read them because I think one was submitted a couple of days ago, and one was submitted, I think, this morning or yesterday. So does everybody have those? Might want to confirm.
I see thumbs up from Commissioner Lindsay, thumbs up from Commissioner Ward. Okay. Vice Chair, Commissioner DeCos.
Yeah, I think I have three items. Did you mention four? I see three links to the.
One of the items is not on the link yet, I don't think, unless it's been updated. The county's filing is, agenda. The county's filing is included in the link. The applicant's filing is not. So I just wanted to make sure, I think you emailed the applicant's filing, and I wanted to make sure you had access to that as well.
I think that's the one I'm missing. I'll check my email.
Yeah, I think we got an email from Gino at 9:42 this morning.
Oh, okay.
Do we need to take some time to review those documents? Five minutes or so, or?
Yeah.
How about what you want to do?
Yeah, how about we take five minutes? Or? Yeah.
Yeah, five minutes, we think.
Five minutes to review? I guess we recess for five minutes and come back at 12:56.
Commissioner DeCos, do you have the documents now? You have the email? Just want to make sure you have it.
I think I have it too. C2, A P P L 23.
Yeah.
It looks like.
Because there were a few emails.
Yeah, I have, yeah, I have it. Five minutes will be fine.
Okay, five minutes. So we'll recess and come back at 12:56. All right, good afternoon. Welcome back again to our Maui Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, October 22nd, 2024. I think everybody has now reviewed all of the documents we have received on this item. But reconfirm all around, thumbs up from all the Commissioners. Good. All right. Now, moving forward, I believe we will be hearing from each of the parties as per the guidance from Mr. Hopper. And so we'll have the appellants go first, followed by the applicant, followed by the county. Before we start, how much time does everybody think they need?
Five minutes, please.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay. And I think we would give the appellants the chance to reserve some of that five minutes for a rebuttal after everybody speaks. Okay. All right, well, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So Yaki Saki, Ryan Hurley here for appellants. So we're just asking for a schedule for discovery for the parties. We can agree on the dates today. And we thought that this was just going to go to the chair, actually, but it's good because other issues emerged in opposition to our motion, which I'll get into. But first, like, we agree with the county because if the Building F permit is moot because it's expired in June 2024, then you could dismiss that without prejudice to us re-intervening or being reinstated as interveners. If Kahana Sunset seeks the same repairs, then that would be fine with us. But for Building A, the matter's not moot because they already did the work. They super need this permit now in order to be compliant. And the contested case would then proceed on conditions for that permit, maybe a timeline for removal of all the armoring they did while the contested case was pending, that kind of thing, and other mitigation. We can see, and also in accord with the county, why a stay would be helpful to allow things like the shoreline certification process to proceed and then reinstate proceedings on Building A. We do disagree, I guess, with everybody about discovery. The county, even in their opposition, they referred to like a DLNR site inspection to review encroachments, and that's the kind of information we'd want to know through discovery. And we don't object to further attempts to settle differences and are happy to sit down with everyone in response to the county. For Kahana Sunset's opposition, first, it's late. We got it at 3:00 PM yesterday, and your rules are very clear. It's two days before the hearing date. It should be stricken. But going into it, because I did get a chance to review just now, the position that, from them, is that whether the 2023 approvals from the director met the standards under county rules, they're trying to say that we shouldn't get discovery on that because, and what the rules are that either it has minimal or no environmental impacts or qualifies as an exemption or as an emergency. Those are all factual issues. Like, I mean, the question would be, like, it's 50 years of coastal erosion or emergency for Building A? And then we would want to know, like, how long have they known about this emergency? Who else has told them about this? How, like, how are the other ways they could have addressed it earlier so that it wouldn't be an emergency? And then like for Building F, there's exemptions for repairs, but is this a repair? Is it 25, if it's going 25 feet down into the bedrock? These are all factual questions. And we can go in a little more into why our discovery categories, and these are just examples, are important for us to get information on. And, you know, I'll reserve the rest of my time for rebuttal because, again, like, we learned a lot of new things through these oppositions. So I'd like to hear what the other parties have to say, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Applicant?
Sure, Chair. So three matters on for, I suppose, the commission at the status conference. One is the schedule. We already have a contested case hearing date of December 10th. We scheduled H2 around the anticipated hearing date for Kahana Sunset. So it would be a shame to not proceed as scheduled on Kahana Sunset since it informed how we scheduled H2. Since we already have a hearing date, all we need to do is handle the working backwards part of that. When do you want pre-hearing motions? When do you want exhibit lists and witness lists and hard copy exhibits? We're happy to abide by the same general timelines that were set forward on the H2 matter that we just covered. That's entirely acceptable to us. The second question is whether to allow discovery. That's what Ms. Saki spent most of her time on. And if you actually read the discovery requests, and this dovetails with my concerns in H2 regarding what are we actually talking about. Among other things that they want are information related to other permits, things that are not at issue before the commission, are not appealed before the commission, that couldn't be appealed before the commission. They want all board governance records for Kahana Sunset, including the minutes. What on earth does that have to do with whether the department appropriately issued permits? These two permits or these permits for their work on two buildings at the time the department issued them? The coastal zone or coastal management plan, the certified shoreline, all of these things that have nothing to do with the actual issues that are before the commission in this proceeding. And so as we went through all of the items in my response, not one of them actually deal with the issues that the commission has decided. They're all intended to broaden, to obfuscate, to delay. The last issue before the commission is the county's suggestion that the matter should be stayed pending the receipt of the certified shoreline. Two reasons with respect to the county's position, I think that it's mistaken. The first is that, as Ms. Saki pointed out, the work for Building A has already been completed, and no certified shoreline was required to perform that work for Building A. It's two separate buildings, F and A. F, as a condition to doing the work, a certified shoreline must be issued or obtained from the state. Not so for Building A. So there's no basis to stay the proceeding as to Building A based on obtaining a certified shoreline for Building F. As to Building F, the permit was issued. The permit is valid, and actually, we've applied to extend the permit. It is so timely before the expiration of the permit. The department has not yet acted on it. So that permit remains live and ready for the department to act on the request for an extension. The requirement to obtain a certified shoreline is a condition of the permit, not to the issuance of it, but to doing the work under the permit. So this commission, within its jurisdiction, can hear and decide whether the department appropriately issued those approvals as to Building F. As for the certified shoreline itself, that will be processed through the State Department of Land and Natural Resources. If through that process encroachments are identified, there are two ways to resolve them. Remove them or obtain an easement or revocable permit from the state to allow the encroachments to remain in place on state land. That is a process that this commission does not concern itself with in any way. Goes before the State Department of Land and Natural Resources. This commission concerns itself with whether the approvals that issued from 2023 were appropriately given by the Planning Department. And that is all the commission considers in these proceedings. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bilberry?
Okay. So I had a meeting, Zoom meeting on October 14th last week with at least five or six people from the DLNR, including people from the Land Division. They advised us that they have already told Kahana Sunset that they cannot certify the shoreline because of the encroachments. They cannot certify the shoreline until the encroachments are removed. So I don't know how or why at this point we need to consider. Let me back up. Building F is encroaching on state lands. There's no question about that. Anybody that's been to the site and has looked at it can see that it's plain. The idea that somehow there needs to be a determination as to whether it's been, it's encroaching by the conduction of a shoreline survey is just really a fantasy. The seawall fronting Building F has been completely undermined by ocean waves, and it has literally physically cracked and is separating from the building. Its collapse into the nearshore waters at Kahana Sunset is imminent. Building F itself is also being undermined by ocean waves. This is the reason that Kahana Sunset's own engineer ordered them years ago to evacuate the building. And to this day, it remains empty and evacuated. I'll just read you a quote from the Managed Retreat Plan prepared by the association. "The building was evacuated due to threat to life and safety of the units vacated until Building F's foundation was stabilized." Anyway, where this is going, again, the, they weren't granted, the association wasn't granted a permit to do anything. They were exempted from having to get a permit, which was going to permit them to or allow them to put in these micro piles underneath the building itself that were going to go down 25 feet into bedrock. And the idea was to stabilize the building for its removal. The condition upon which the work was going to be allowed to proceed first was going to be, as Ms. Saki suggested, there was an expiration date for the work to proceed. That date can be extended. That doesn't mean that the exemption has expired. But the other condition, or one of the other conditions for the exemption and for the work to proceed was that the association get a certified shoreline survey. And at this juncture, it has now been made clear to us that they cannot do that until the building is removed. So I really, this is going to be kind of a futile exercise to talk about whether this exemption is valid or not here until we know for sure, and we do know, but until we get some sort of legal ruling or determination in writing from the DLNR land division as to whether they can actually certify a shoreline. And it's a virtual certainty that they cannot. Now, there is a separate proceeding now in front of the circuit court where this determination, I suspect, is going to be made. And there's a hearing set for October 29th. I don't know how, given what the appellants have asked for in that hearing, which is a preliminary injunction precluding any of the work from going forward, I don't know how that hearing is going to play out without a ruling, one way or the other, from the circuit court as to whether the shoreline can be certified. And I think it's a virtual certainty that the witnesses who have been subpoenaed by the interveners, appellants in this action, to testify at that civil matter in front of the circuit court are going to tell the circuit court, we cannot certify that shoreline. If that's what happens, and it's likely that is what's going to happen, then I don't know what we're doing here with respect to building A because that's likely going
Thirty seconds.
And validate the exemption. Now, as to building A, I don't know why we would go through the exercise of wanting to get a ruling from you as to whether the emergency permit for building A is valid when the work's already been done. It's not like that work is going to be undone where they injected concrete material into a sinkhole to stabilize that building.
Time.
Anyway.
You can sum up in a sentence.
Yeah. In a sentence, I would say that at the least, we should see what happens in the circuit court on the pending motion for a preliminary injunction regarding shoreline certification before we go juggernauting off into a contested case hearing here.
Thank you. Back to the appellants.
Thank you, Yanki Saki for appellants. Yeah, a lot going on here. So for building F and all the stick for that right now, one of the requirements, or actually, I want to respond to the applicant's statement that there's no certified shoreline required for building A emergency work. But, I mean, please don't forget that certified, your department has required certified shorelines for Kahana Sunset since 2009. And you don't certify just part of the shoreline. You certify the whole thing. It's just over and over, they keep evading that requirement, maybe based on the fact that we let it get to the, or they let it get to a point of emergency. You know, and I can respond to, like, yes, we need these, like, we did raise other permits, but that's because, that's showing this pattern of Kahana Sunset waiting, waiting until there's an emergency. And specifically, one of the permits you want was not just, it wasn't even a permit. It was the planning department saying, no, we're not going to give you a permit for building F because of this new statute, Act 16 says you can't build seawalls on sandy beaches. And they disapproved the plan. And that was 2022. But the plan is from 2020. So, okay. Let me just say one more thing. Since this time, well, you're right, I'm sorry. So one reason why we want the governance documents is because Kahana Sunset is saying that we want them to be able to remove building F and A. But in their managed retreat plans, they said that they can't remove structures unless they're, all the affected unit owners approve. They need 100% of the owners to vote. So this is relevant to whether or not they can comply with permit expectations. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions for any of the parties? Commissioner Dicos?
Thank you, Chair. I have a question for Mr. Billbury. If, I'm a little confused with the description. You said the obvious encroachment that's happening at Kahana Sunset. So bad that the state can't even do a certified shoreline until that encroachment is removed. I don't understand how an exemption, can you clarify how county can even provide an exemption when the repairs are for some, I know this is how you define repairs, but can you explain if something is already on state property, wouldn't that just automatically go to the state? And until you figure out where the county side is on, you can't really rant much on that? Or maybe you can clarify us?
Yeah, I can try. I think, as Ms. Isaki said, there's a lot going on here. One of the conditions for the exemption, and at least allowing the work proposed as a temporary repair, and the idea was to stabilize the building so that it could be removed. But one of the conditions to allow that work to proceed was that the association get a certified shoreline survey or shoreline certification, shoreline survey certification. Again, I had discussions with the DLNR land division last week, and they have advised me that at this juncture, they cannot issue a, or cannot certify a shoreline because of the encroachment of building F into the shoreline. Now, they haven't made that determination formally. I have a plan to send them a letter to make that determination. But it seems to me that if they, once they do say, yes, this building is encroaching, we cannot certify the shoreline, then the question is, given that that is a condition for the work proceeding, how does the work proceed? That condition cannot be met. And then it raises the question of whether the exemption is valid or not. I'm not making a determination, one way or the other, as to whether it is. I think, actually, quite frankly, that might be something for this body to make a determination about after they ultimately hear evidence in this case. But yeah, I just, I just don't know how at this juncture, if, again, that, once that determination is made, the shoreline cannot be certified, I think it calls into question this proceeding and as to whether it's necessary. Because it arguably invalidates the exemption given for building F. And then, again, as to building A, I don't know why we would go through the exercise of trying to decide whether an emergency permit that was, that allowed the work to proceed at building A is valid when that work has already occurred? Because the decision's not going to change anything. I think I went a little beyond your question.
No, that's helpful. But I am still, I'm confused. Maybe a side question regarding emergency permits versus just regular repair permits. The idea that work can't proceed if a certified shoreline has been requested as part of the permit, and if that certification is not met, work can't proceed. Has that really been applied? Because there have been multiple certified shorelines requested here, yet work has proceeded. I don't know if all of them have been emergencies. I don't think they all have. But can you just, I guess, wait till it's an emergency and then bypass the requirement for certification? Can you just sort of square that circle of, the planning department requests certification, but yet can proceed to grant permits, particularly emergency permits, without them providing that certification?
Yeah, I apologize, but I can't square that for you. I do know that there was, from what my review of the record, was there was a requirement to get a certified shoreline to do work on building A in 2017, and that work proceeded without the certified shoreline. I can't square that. But I can say that, again, currently, in order to proceed with the work that has been allowed or will be allowed to proceed under the exemption for building F, there has to be a certification of the shoreline. And so, if the shoreline cannot be certified, I don't know how that work proceeds. And that determination, again, I believe, will be made in the civil proceeding, which is set for hearing next, again, October 29th. And if it comes back, that we come out of that hearing with a determination by the circuit court, and I may be missing something. I mean, Ms. Isaki or Cal can correct me if I'm wrong. But if we come out of that hearing with a ruling of some sort from the circuit court that, yeah, the shoreline can't be certified based on testimony from people from the DLNR who Ms. Isaki has subpoenaed to testify at that hearing, then I don't know what we're doing here.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Billbury. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Dicos.
The only other thing I would like to add is, I think the problem, though, with what's being asked by the intervener appellants is that in objecting to this stabilization repair, they're asking you to leave the building in a condition that's pretty precarious and threatens the nearshore waters. So the only path forward to try to stabilize this building before a potential catastrophe happens is to do this repair. And with, short of that, what the intervenors are actually asking to do is just let the building sit there until it falls into the ocean. So there's a little more going on than the Ms. Isaki is even aware of, I guess. But this is a real problem. And nothing that happens here, and probably nothing that happens in the circuit court, is going to change that. So the other request I made, and I'm sorry I didn't bring this up before, is that you need to order us back into mediation to see if we can work out something that will actually address this problem. And it is a real problem. And I don't care what ruling occurs here and what ruling occurs in the circuit court, none of that is going to change the underlying problem, which is if we have a building on the shoreline that is undermined and compromised and could fall into the ocean any day, given now that we're in the winter season and we have big waves coming in. So, in my mind, the best solution at this point, I mean, we have to do this one step at a time at this point, is order us back to mediation. We have a mediator who's willing to work with us to see if we can come up with some plan to address this issue that all the parties can agree to and see if we can stop this potential catastrophe from happening.
Commissioner Dicos?
Thank you. And just to clarify, I mean, I agree, I'm not sure. So you mentioned this is the only way to keep people out of harm's way. Obviously, if this has been going on for two decades, there's been some negligence there. But would you not just remove the building? Because I know the permit allowed them to
Chair, I, if I could comment, please?
Yes, Mr. Hopper.
We're at a pre-hearing conference right now. We need to decide the next steps to take. And I understand, in part, because this relates to requests for a stay or return to mediation, there's maybe some discussion of what's going on. But like, we're not going to, we should not be getting into the full merits of the contested case at this point. I think it might be helpful, as we did for the last item, to just, Chair's suggestion, have each party sort of briefly and succinctly say, you know, we just came up with like a form of a motion that we got through in the last one. Maybe each party can go through and say what they want the commission to do. Because we're in three different directions here, and maybe more than that. And so I think it would be helpful for each party because we're doing this orally with, you know, with the commission. It's not all attorneys. And so, we're looking for some, something simple for the commission to, you know, a motion for the commission to decide on. So I don't know, Chair, if you want to ask the parties to sort of, succinctly as they can, say what they want the parties to do here? Because we're not necessarily coming back to that right now.
Yes. Commissioner Dicos, you get it?
Sorry.
Did you understand what Mr. Hopper said?
I did, but I do have a question for Mr. Hopper.
Go ahead.
So, I mean, Mr. Billbury was presenting the case so that we can make our decisions whether stuff should apply or not. Just reading the applicant's response to what the appellants are requesting states, we're only deciding whether the planning department correctly issued permits, right? So it seems like all of this information applies to understanding whether the planning department correctly processed those permits? Or am I missing something?
We are getting to that point. So this is similar to the last item we just slogged our way through. So we are, we have a hearing scheduled right now for December 10th in which we would work through that question. So right now, what we are supposed to be doing is figuring out, you know, the structure for arriving there in terms of all the deadlines for every party to submit their, well, yeah, all the various pre-hearing motions, just like we did for the last one. So we're not, like Mr. Hopper said, we're not talking about the merits of the case. We're figuring out our structure and framework for arriving at the contested case, or the hearing on December 10th. Yes, Mr. Hopper?
So my sort of Cliff Notes understanding of what the parties are looking at here is it sounds like intervenors want to have a discovery schedule agreed to. I don't know if that would be similar to the last one where we have discovery motions, specific requests due by a certain date, and then the chair rule on that after responses? And then have a procedural framework for submissions like we had on the last item before the upcoming hearing? It sounds like the applicant wants to have a pre-hearing schedule set, similar to the last meeting, but without the discovery because they objected to the discovery. And it sounds like the county would like to have a stay and an order back to mediation due to the outstanding issues. And I would, I think maybe you could ask the parties to clarify if I've misstated anything there. But I think we need to sort of look to figure out where we're headed. But, I mean, again, up to the commission. If you want to ask whatever questions you like, go ahead. But I think we're headed toward, we did in the last meeting, in some form. But that's my
Well, I could amend my position and make this a little easier.
Hold on. I think, yeah, we'll give each party, you know, three minutes to state your desires. So we'll go same order, Ms. Isaki, then the applicant, then Mr. Billbury. Thank you. And yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Hopper, that is confusing. We, after learning the information from the department about DLNR doing a site visit and having made some, initiated something, we think, yes, that there should be a stay because if it happens that Kahana Sunset can't even comply with the shoreline certification or other conditions, then why are we going through this? So what we want is a stay until at least the, well, I guess, we should get more information about this DLNR site visit. And yes, also, the court, in our environmental court proceeding, they might also rule on this and determine that everything's already encroaching and other state processes have to happen first, which is also in the building F permit. That's one of the conditions also, is that state processes have to happen first. Thank you.
Okay. So specific to Mr. Hopper's question of what you want this body to do, decide
A stay.
A stay. Okay.
Sure.
Go ahead, Mr. Hopper.
And for how long would the parties want a stay for?
A stay pending the DLNR site visit and the certification of the shoreline.
Yeah, I would think, I mean, we can talk more, but you should probably have a date certain as to when, if you're going to do that, have a date certain. So, and then if there's still outstanding items. But if you're going to head down that route, I would recommend being specific as to what you want to do there.
Okay. Mr. Chip Chase.
Okay. Sorry, just making notes. So I'll start with a stay. We would request the commission not approve a stay and that the commission proceed with the hearing as scheduled. As for litigation, administrative proceedings come before litigation. So it's the litigation that jumped the gun, not the other way around. This proceeding and any proceeding on a certified shoreline come before there's a right to go to court over those things. So they've jumped the gun on that. And I don't think they get to stay this proceeding as a result of running to court too quickly. The second thing is, there is no proceeding on a certified shoreline without the application for building F. In other words, we're not going to go certify the shoreline and go through the process of either removing items that are identified as encroaching or seeking an easement or revocable permit from the state outside the context of this permit. So if this proceeding is not moving forward until there's a certified shoreline, but there's no reason to certify the shoreline without this proceeding, we're putting the chicken back in the egg. It's this permit and the condition in it that drove the need to pursue a certified shoreline for building F. Coming back to A again, there is no requirement under the permit that's been appealed to obtain a certified shoreline. So that wouldn't even be a basis for staying A anyway. So we see no reason to depart from the schedule that all parties agreed to set this for hearing on December 10th. The second thing that we would say is no discovery, at least as proposed by the applicants. They have made a motion for discovery, so a little bit different than H2 where there was no motion. They were looking for time to make a motion and have the Chair rule on it. The motion that they have made, the discovery is inappropriate and should be denied. If they want time to make a subsequent motion that was actually within the context of the things that are appealed from, and the Chair is willing to take on deciding that, as she did in the prior proceeding, that's fine. We could set a deadline for a future motion. But the one that they proposed should not be granted. The last thing that we want is to set the schedule for the submission of those papers. So if any motions for discovery are due, any other motions for discovery are due in a week, as we did in the prior proceeding, responses following that same schedule, all other pre-hearing filings, including pre-hearing motions that are not dispositive, exhibits, witness lists, exhibit lists.
Thirty seconds.
Same schedule, we're entirely fine with that. The last item is the direction to order us into mediation. We're happy to continue participating. We participated separately with the county when the interveners did not, or the appellants in this case, did not want to participate. We're glad to keep going, but we don't think that the proceeding should be delayed as a result. We can do two things at once, we can lock and chew gum, we can mediate and have this proceeding at the same time, if that's the commission's pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Billbury.
Yeah, I would appreciate being ordered back to mediation, because I think that's the only thing that's really going to address the underlying problem here. As far as the hearing date, I mean, I initially asked for it to be stayed. I'm kind of on the fence about that now, because you can set it, we can proceed, or it's already set, we could proceed on December 10th. But we'll probably be back here before that, letting you know that either the Circuit Court said this certified, this shoreline can't be certified, in which case it's going to change the very nature of what happens at that proceeding. But the other thing is, I mean, that's less than two months away. I mean, that's like right around the corner now. So I don't know how, really, if you're going, if there's going to be discovery, we're going to meet that deadline. And you've got, I guess, motions that might get filed. So at the least, I would think you might want to continue that hearing, given all of the stuff swirling around. I think most importantly of which is, once we get some sort of determination as to whether this shoreline can actually be certified, which seems a virtual certainty that it cannot. Now, I did, in my conversations with the DLNR, let them know I would be sending them a letter to request a site inspection. They agreed they could come out and do an inspection, make some observations, and then give us not so much a formal decision, but at least give us an opinion as to whether the shoreline can be certified, which I think would be useful here. Ultimately, though, it may be that next week, the Circuit Court gives us something more definitive as to whether that shoreline can be certified. And then I think that, again, that really calls into question the exemption, that was whether the work can proceed under the exemption that was given for building F. And I don't know, maybe that's something that still needs to be taken up here. But the final thing I would say with regard to the hearing date, there's no rush. Nothing's going to happen at this building pending a determination for a certified shoreline or pending, this work's not going to get started anytime in the foreseeable future. The association doesn't have any bids.
Thirty seconds.
They have not appropriated any financing to start this work. So I think it's safe to say that this, any work at building F, which is the only thing left, is not going to occur within the next year and probably more like two years. So there's no reason to rush to a hearing on December 10th while we wait for critical issues that need to be pinned down to be pinned down, again, such as whether this shoreline can be certified. And again, the work in building A has been timed, so.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Dicos.
So there is a lot going on here, it is confusing. What's confusing to me, and I, you know, is there is a pattern, right? We're in this situation because of a pattern. And the question is, this hearing that we're having on December, is are we discussing the pattern of decision-making, which is tied to this case? And part of understanding information is what the state, I guess what I'm confused about is, I bring these topics up often, and it makes everyone very uncomfortable. And that the response I get from the county is there's no issue with state encroachment. There's just no issue there, that's why these permits are proceeding as is. There's no certification needed, there's no encroachment. And now we're at a point where, okay, if there is a state determination, then there may be a reevaluation of how those decisions were made. So I don't know if that state determination is relevant to our December 12th meeting. And maybe it's completed by then, and whether or not we can use that in our proceedings, I don't know. But I do think it's a critical piece to this discussion. So I'm not sure how we proceed without it.
Yes. So I think maybe we need to take a step back and, you know, make sure we all understand what the commission is to be ruling on at this hearing. And maybe Staff, can you lay that out for us?
Well, I can.
Or Mr. Hopper?
Yeah, I mean, Staff is a party, so.
Okay, yes.
They can sort of generally go over that stuff potentially. But my understanding is, the appeals are essentially where these permits issued properly. So there's a director decision to issue the permits. And the appellants have said for the exemption, it was not properly issued. Generally, an exemption would be issued based on one of the exemption categories in HRS 205A-22, which is the definition of development. There's a list of things that are development, then a list of things that are not development, and then an exception that says, except that if something may have an adverse environmental or ecological effect, it can be considered development. So I think that would center around whether that exemption is proper and a determination of whether the department properly issued that exemption. The other appeal was for an emergency permit, and that would be, you know, basically an argument as to whether the emergency permit was properly issued or not. And there could be a decision to affirm the director decision or a decision to say that the director acted improperly in some manner. I think that's a broad sort of discussion of what the commission's ultimate decision-making would be.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions on that? No? Okay. Commissioner Dicos, you got that? Does that help you sort through what we are working towards?
I let you take the lead, and I'm not sure what we, yeah, I will follow the discussion. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So commissioners, again, we are all involved in hearing this out. And so one question is, do we keep our hearing date that we already have set for December 10th, which is the last meeting we have this year? Noting that we have our other hearing already set for February. So if we push this back, we would be in January. Or we keep this for December 10th? But if we do keep it for December 10th, then we, you know, it's tight timeline for all the parties to pull all of their docs together. Although it's been scheduled all this time, so hopefully everybody's been planning for that.
So what are our options?
Well, our options are, well, there's a few things we have to decide. But one maybe easier, one that we can tackle is if we, well, if we keep the December 10 hearing date, or if we, you know, allow for a stay until we know what the court rules, if you think that's necessary. Otherwise, if that's like extraneous to the issue that we are deciding on, then we don't need to wait for the court's decision, and we can go forward with making our decision.
What comes before that?
The court is October 29th, so it's over a month before.
The 31st, just to be clear.
Okay. Sorry, I think we had some documents that said the 29th.
No, I said that.
You said that, okay.
But if we waited, we have our meeting on the 10th, we're going to have that information too.
Correct. Yeah.
At least take care of the certified shoreline. Then they still have to go to mediation.
Yeah, well, that would be another thing for us to decide, if we have them go back to mediation. So there's, the questions are what to do about the hearing date, whether or not we allow discovery, whether or not we send the parties to mediation. Commissioner Dicos.
Thank you, Chair. So trying to understand, so if this case on the 29th, the 31st, sorry, the 31st, deems that the shoreline cannot be certified until the encroachments are removed, how does that affect, because our December 10th is dealing with the property that's on state land. So I think to Mr. Billbury's point, what are we deliberating if it's already been determined that everything's on state land and has to get removed so that they can actually do a certified shoreline? So what will we be deliberating on the 12th, on the 10th?
Regardless of what the court decides, the question to us is whether the director was correct or not in issuing the exemption and the emergency permit.
Okay. Okay.
So we're kind of like, you know, one step before the certified shoreline question.
And then we're also deciding whether previous permit grant will be admissible as new information? Or was that one of the requests from the intervenors?
Yes.
Are we deciding that as well today?
That would be another decision to make, yes, on whether we allow, on whether we approve or deny that motion for discovery.
Okay.
But the main, that, yes, what we are deciding is, was the director correct or in error in issuing the permits? That is what our hearing will be about. Commissioner Ward.
I don't think your mic is on, I can't hear you.
Oh, yeah, red button. That little screen should come on if it does. Try again?
Yes, no?
Yes.
Okay. So for me, I'm just looking at it from, if we look at the 10th, let's look back what it is that we want to obtain for data or information, look at what those timelines are, because we may find that there's enough time. So I don't know, like debating, should we, should we or shouldn't we? That would be my recommendation of, let's figure out what we would need, see if we have the time to be able to get that. And I think that somewhat kind of directs, in my opinion, if the 10th works or not.
Sure.
Just a suggestion.
No, yep. That makes sense. Which brings us to the question of whether or not we allow discovery. So do we need more than what is already in the record? Which we've heard from two parties saying no, but we've heard from one party saying, yes, we need all of these extra things.
You're asking my opinion?
I'm putting that out to the commission. So since you were already talking, we could start with you, or we could have somebody else answer.
From my perspective, I don't see the need for discovery, based on what we're deciding. But I welcome other opinions.
No, thank you. Okay. Commissioner Dicos.
Yeah, I think, and I think it's all in there, but there is, I think there was an outline of this property's history, right? We heard, you know, we're talking 50 years of shoreline protection. That's, you know, I don't know how many permits issued by the county. But that pattern of issuing permits and to getting us to this state where it's so bad you can't even do a shoreline, I think that is important in understanding the decision-making process. So I think it's all in there, unless I'm reading something that's just been submitted recently that won't be allowed. Or is everything that we've read today that we have in our possession is part of the discovery? That was a question.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is you're wondering if we have like the complete record of permits already, right?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it was outlined in some of the history of this parcel. But I think it's very relevant to the decision-making process.
Yeah.
Getting to a point like this, and it would certainly apply to many, many, many other situations.
So Mr. Billbury, in his submittal to us, has a history going back to April 1975, starting with approval for the seawall, for building F.
If I may.
Yes.
And a lot of that came from the interveners' notice of appeal. They have, I think, even more in there, so.
Okay, which is all part of our record already. Yes. So we do have that information already at hand.
Okay. I mean, can we ask the interveners? It sounds like all the discovery, and what discovery are they anticipating is missing? Am I allowed to ask that question?
Yes. Mr. Hopper says yes.
Mississaki, is there discovery that you think is not included in what we already have? That would be pertinent?
Yes, thank you for the question. So, I mean, amongst other things, the, like I said, the construction plans are from 2020. Between 2020 and then in 2022, the planning department said you can't do these, you can't do this. the planning department said you can't do these, you can't do this reconstruction of a seawall. But then in 2023 magically they can do it and it's not considered construction based on the same construction plan. So we want to know what changed? Do we have the right construction plans? Did some, was there some discussion that, was there some other trade-offs that happened? Like what, what changed in between 2022 or 2020, I guess, when they, or when they made the construction plans in 2023? Or maybe it's just 2022 when they, when the director said that this is a new seawall, but then in 2023 they said, no, it's just repairs, even. Okay, so that's one thing. Another thing, like I said, the governance records. And, you know, because if they, we're trying to figure out, why are you not removing this building, right? Building F, no one can live there. So we, we also want to know, like, what are some conditions that could be crafted if you don't just deny this permit? The other thing we want to look into is like, we've heard the AOAL president saying, why would we spend money to stabilize a wall and then have to remove it later? Like, so what are these, what are the, that would be a very important thing to know, if they're not actually going to remove the wall later? And what is their understanding of that permit? And then given, given their really long history of not complying with permits, let's make sure that we understand what they plan to do and what their understanding is of it. So those are just three of the things we want to know about. Oh, and certainly we'd want to subpoena them, like perhaps the AOAL president, to make sure that we understand what he was talking about before the commission. So we'd want the subpoena power, we want some answers to our questions, and we want some documents.
Thank you. I guess I have another question, Chair, just along those lines then. If, because it was a previous director and I don't know who are the parties that were part of that decision, is that part of the, are we going to even know what, what the decision was based on?
Um, we saw.
And sorry, this, Mr. Hopper can address. On the hearing on the 10th, are we going to be able, you know, if we're making a determination whether proper procedure was made in decision-making, are we going to be able to ask questions to the parties that made the decisions? Since they don't even work for the county.
Well, I'm not sure what specific parties you're talking about. I mean, the parties here will have witness and exhibit lists of who they're going to put on. Presumably, there will be someone to talk about the county's issuance of the exemption slash emergency permit and the basis for that that you can talk to. I, I don't think you can necessarily guarantee there will be specific witnesses. If there's a request to subpoena a witness, that's something that you can, you know, consider. Currently, there's sort of, the discovery motion sort of like dealt with general areas, but didn't have like, here's the list of specific people we're going to subpoena or the witnesses we need. So I don't know if there would be a, I think normally there would be a, you know, subsequent actual specific subpoenas or specific interrogatories and other, other requests that would need to be reviewed and a chance to object to. And my understanding of past practice is we would look at those requests and the chair would grant a motion as to those requests specifically. But, you know, parties can correct me if I'm wrong on that. But it's a relatively broad motion that deals with areas and anticipates the requests coming later. So if you're going to have discovery, you're going to need to make some pretty quick decisions before the 10th in order to have that schedule done. Because you need to account for time to actually file the actual requests, have time for responses from the parties and have time for, you know, rebuttals and then time for the chair, presumably, to ultimately rule on each of those. So potentially to rule initially on whether to allow the specific request. I guess there's a blanket request to say all future requests on these areas are allowed, but I don't know if that's something that we generally would have rather than specific requests that the chair would approve, such as a set of interrogatories or subpoenas in particular. And, and, you know, so I would anticipate for discovery, you'd need to see the more specific requests at some point and have a chance for the parties to respond to that. Wait, backing up, a chance for the chair to see the discovery request, a chance for the chair to determine whether to approve those requests, and then a, a chance for objections and responses, you know, to those. And then the request would go out and then a time to respond. And then if the responses are not adequate, a time to respond to, to like a motion to compel or something along those lines. So that's what we'd be potentially looking at in a regular discovery process. So I don't know if there's a way to narrow that or if the commission, you know, can find a timeline for that to be done before the 10th, which is, you know, you can look at that option if the chair is working on those, or some other action. But that's, that's sort of the discovery process that, you know, that, that would happen.
So essentially, the, when the permit was issued, there was language on why the permit was issued. That's essentially the bulk of what we will be deciding on whether we will, we may or may not have persons that sign that document there to discuss how they came to those conclusions. We're probably relying on the printed material.
Mike?
I don't know if department, since it's there.
Yeah, the planner is still with the Maui County. You will have a witness who's got firsthand knowledge of the decisions.
Yeah, and then you're correct, Commissioner Dicos. There's, for those, you're probably familiar with it, but you'd have an application, you know, a, a request for an assessment request as well as an emergency permit application. You'd have that and then the department's records with respect to that and any other evidence the parties want to, to submit that is relevant. I think the, the appellants are saying they believe there's additional relevant evidence that they want to uncover through a discovery process. And you've heard the counter, counter arguments from the other parties on that, so. But yes, you would have, you know, the, the appeal, the, all the documents that have been filed to date and any documents that any of the parties set forth as exhibits. So that's, that's where you'd have your, you'd create your evidentiary record as you would in any other case. And interveners have asked to take discovery to find additional information and obviously the other parties have objected to that. So that's where you're at.
Okay, so the permits are signed by the director. So the directors know, the previous director will not be there, but it sounds like planning department is saying there are bodies that were part of those decision-making process that will be available, but probably not the director who made the final decision on the, on those permits.
I think it's just like, it's just like any SMA application we see where there's a planner who is in charge of working on the project, who brings the, you know, who for SMA majors, they're the ones who present the project to us. But in these cases where they're administratively approved by the department, then it's internal. But there would still be a planner assigned to the project. So I understand from Mr. Billbury that that planner, that very planner is available.
Obviously, I ask in all these questions, because when these came up in front of us before and I tried to ask questions, I, I got, I was recommended not to ask those questions because it could get litigated and so on and so forth. So I just want to make sure at some point those questions can be answered. Sounds like we should have people available there to answer. This is why these decisions were made. Okay. Thank you, Chair. Sorry.
Okay, so back to the question we were deciding on. You know, if we do, if we are keeping the December 10 hearing date, then do we have enough time for receiving all the information that we want? And which brings into play the question of allowing discovery or not? Which then the question arises of, is there anything that would be uncovered through the discovery process that is not available to us already? Which we would like really need to make this decision? And it sounds like you were mostly concerned with having the planner, planning department staff, who is knowledgeable about these permits, present to be able to answer questions, correct? And then the history of all the permits before?
I mean, there's one other item I think significant, I don't know how it applies. But yes, I think, you know, when I asked Mr. Billbury, how did we get to this point? He had no clue, he couldn't square that circle. Those are the same questions I would probably have for the decision-makers. But one particular item, when I've gotten a response of how are you permitting repairs on, on an encroachment of state land, I'm usually told these are fixed shorelines. That's why we're doing it ocean. Public trust is on the other side of that structure. The state does define the fixed shoreline differently. So I don't know if that's relevant in our decision-making on the 10th, but it would be valuable and maybe that'll be determined at the 31st in that hearing. But understanding how the state defines their jurisdiction of where the high wash of the wave starts and ends is relevant or at least impacts the decision-making of county. So I would, I request planning department requests that in writing from the state, but that hasn't been provided of how they define fixed shoreline. So whether it's appropriate to request that now so we have that available or on the 10th? Maybe for Mr. Hopper, is that appropriate to ask?
I mean, at this, at this point, the parties are going to submit the evidence that they, they want to submit to make their case. I suppose if the department does not adequately show the basis for granting the exemption, they risk that the permit, that an adverse decision on them. I suppose if in the course of the hearing, you want to get additional information or hear additional information from the parties, you can request that from, from the parties as, as well. But yeah, I, I don't know if right now saying, I want you to get this information as part of a pre-hearing conference. I mean, I suppose you can, you know, mention that these are important issues. I mean, one of the, one of the things that you can do is narrow the issues or like we did in the last proceeding, talk about the issues that are significant. So I think you can talk about that and let the parties know what issues are significant. But to an extent, the parties will have to determine what exhibits, what evidence they want to put before you, what questions they want to ask and make their case. And if they don't do that adequately, then yeah, they, they risk an adverse ruling against them. I think so, the best, the most I can say at this point.
Okay. So it sounds like everything Commissioner Dicos is asking for is either in public record or can be answered by planning staff?
I would agree, everything except the state's definition of.
Okay.
Certified trial, I agree.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So then commissioners, I think this brings us back to our timeline of deadlines for everything prior to December 10th. Yeah? So we did something similar to the last one. Say everything has to be to us by two weeks ahead of time? Commissioner Ward?
I would agree, except that we have Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving.
So I would kind of.
Days off.
Kind of count that week off, so to speak.
Um, okay.
But the other that I would add is if there are going to be subpoenas, I would add additional time so that they can actually be served. So my estimate roughly would be like the first week of November would be. But I, I don't know from a subpoena timeline process. So of course, I don't, is that something that's relatively quick?
I don't know if we've ever overseen a subpoena process through the commission. And as to whether we can subpoena state officials and actually compel them to appear, we'd have to look into that as well. Because they're the state government and we're the county government, so we'd have to look at that issue. We talked about subpoenas in other cases, but they were never issued. And I think the parties got the witnesses that they needed to. Now, this is a case of, I think, of interest to lots of agencies. So I don't know if there's something where the parties can voluntarily appear or appear via video conference for, for meetings if they're called as a witness. State's not a party here, so it would be a little bit, you know, different. So either, you know, if the subpoena doesn't work, I don't know if there's a request from the, the other request for commission. But I think in my mind, that would be unprecedented. I don't know of a case where we've, we've done that, I could be mistaken. But a county board doing that, so yeah, we're in sort of uncharted territories, although there's language in our rules that do allow for that. So we could, you know, we could potentially still do that. But as far as timing, you know, and I don't know if any of these state officials are available or if it's necessarily, once you see the subpoenas, because I have no idea who's, who's going to be listed, because there's no list that we have at this point. You know, the chair would still presumably have to look at them and see if, if they're, you know, appropriate and then approve their, their, their issuance. And, you know, then we'd have to look at, can we require people to show up to those meetings too? You know, how that would happen, so. And I don't know if the, the intervenors have an idea of numbers they're talking about or who they need here. But that would be relevant information as, as well. Because that's, that's all to be considered. But yeah, I don't, I know of a case, and I think in Wai La 670, we, we talked about it, but I don't think anyone actually got subpoenaed that I know of. But, you know, so we'd have to, you know, look at, look at that process and, you know, the end enforcement. I'm not sure if we're going to end up in court trying to get people to show up or, or what's going to happen. But, you know, there are, there are state officials that certainly appear at the Landes Commission or other, other bodies that are sworn under oath and testify. So hopefully if that's something the commission thinks will be important and relevant and parties want to do that, that's potential, you know, that there's potential to do that. But sorry, I can't give you a real clear answer on that, because it's just, to my knowledge, hasn't been done before. But your rules do allow for it.
Clear as much.
Yeah, what you can do is just if you maybe talk to the intervenors about doing it, how many they want, what they're considering, or you could leave it up to the chair and have the chair review them as they come in and approve or deny, you know, based on that. But again, you don't have to allow discovery, that is discretionary among the commission. So if you believe it's not something you, you want to require, you can also rule, rule that way. If you believe, I think I went over the standard of that for that earlier, but there are, you know, there's items in your rules that talk about, basically it says, hearing officer will allow utilization of the discovery process where appropriate and where such would not unreasonably delay the proceedings. And it says they may request discovery in a manner consistent with the rules. So it's not like under rules of civil procedure, you're allowed to do discovery and parties have to allow if it's relevant. Here you can decide whether or not to allow discovery in general.
So. Yes. Okay, so that is one, I think, higher level question. Do we feel it necessary to allow for discovery? Commissioner Ward?
I, I don't feel it's necessary.
Okay. I see no from, oh, Vice President Thompson. Commissioner Dicos.
Yeah, I think this case is a huge one. I think it's, it's going to set precedent probably for a lot of what's coming down the road. So getting all the information that we have may be important. Just on a side, I know we have an education. I don't know when, I think that was scheduled between now and a training session between now and the, the hearing date. Is that what I heard from?
I think that is our next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, that would be our next meeting.
Yeah, there could be, I mean, there could be a state rep there just to hash out some of these public trust issues. No, I'd see a head nodding.
But just, I don't want to use that as an opportunity to ask questions about this contested case proceeding. You can get general education, but don't be looking to ask questions that are dealing with this proceeding at that, because you need to have the parties there and aware of all of the items you can. and aware of all of the items you consider for this hearing. So I think we just got to be careful to say, oh, that'll, I mean, they can maybe give general information, but you got to understand you're in a contested case hearing here. And so I would sort of refrain from asking questions about this particular project in that, in that, those, in that session.
Yeah, and I was more suggesting we do the education then rather than at the hearing and go through what is a fixed shoreline, what does, how does state determine that? When do we trigger certified shoreline? Like we could potentially get educated on that then. So we're informed at the hearing not to discuss the case at the training session. That was not my intent at all.
Yes, because you're seeking clear understanding of how the state decides on what is a fixed shoreline, what is not, right?
Well, we have a, we have a process where the state doesn't get involved until the county kicks it to the state. Once the county decides everything is private property, there's no encroachment, the state never gets involved. So if you keep issuing permits and never bring the state in, you get situations like we're dealing with now where the state's like, wow, I should have been here back when, when I could actually do a certified shoreline. So I just, I think it's important that we understand that process and where, where did things go wrong or where, you know, where does the, does the law protect the private property? Or does the law protect the public trust? And when those collide, you know, as planning commissioners who are supposed to follow public trust doctrine and follow the SMA shoreline rules, where do, how do we make those decisions in determining whether the county was fair in its process? So I think there's a lot to unpack there and I don't know if we can do it in our training session, but I think it's important. So if we can, I think there's some discovery. I think there's a lot in there, but maybe there's other discovery that might help with the, the December 10th hearing.
Um, okay. So. Uh, it sounds like we might be crunched with staying with the December 10 date. But, um, so we've heard from two of the parties that December 10 is okay. Two of the parties said mediation is okay. Motion for discovery. It sounds like we would need more, something more specific than what the applicant has, I mean, appellant has given us, appellant, sorry, has given us in their list. Because it sounds like it's too vague for people to decide on and doesn't have, you know, any specific people named, for instance. And so, um, that would need to be clarified before anyone would accept that. I do want to know, we are running short on time. So can we?
Could I make a potential suggestion?
Yeah.
Crazy idea, maybe.
Yeah.
Do we potentially consider moving the 10th to sometime in January? Take the CPAC time review, move that to the 10th. So we have a day of the 10th of CPAC review. And then we go early January to give us a bit of room to collect the information on potentially with some of the things we seek. Just an idea.
Department, can we do that?
Uh, let me take a look at the schedule. I, I believe we could.
As you helped December 10 just yesterday.
Uh, December 10th, I believe also had an SMA one permit, but you know, that doesn't, that shouldn't take all day. I hope it wouldn't.
Can I, can I just pop in if we're talking scheduling?
Sure.
Hi, thanks. Okay, so if, um, because I've also been talking with the director a little bit too about scheduling. And so, and I know Chair, you had requested training as well, because we have the new commissioner. Hi, new commissioner. And so, um, we do have to consider that we're, um, going to be putting some training. You know, your orientation, corp counsel, HR. So if you guys are going to move this date from December, um, I would love to steal that time to put some training.
Um, we were told there would be training in our next meeting in November?
Yes. Yes, it takes more than one day.
Okay.
Um, we have the overview, HR, corp counsel. The director has asked for, um, Department of O E V Resources, Flood, SMA, L R D, PID. It's, it's longer than one day.
Okay, so that would consume our December 10 meeting if we didn't do this.
Um, I believe there's one other item on that date. Let me pull up the calendar. On, yeah, on the next meeting, we were thinking about having some of your orientation training. And then, um, the director had requested to keep up the momentum of that, to have the other training put somewhat close by. And I was juggling the calendar. Um, if we were to remove Kahana Sunset, the only other item on December 10th is a time extension. So we could do the rest of the training on that date.
Okay.
Just something, I'm just offering.
Okay. I think the most pressing need for training right now is mainly to do with the coastal zone law. Which, will that be the one that comes in, the part that comes in our next meeting?
I think the intent was, so there's, there's a whole, you know, like bunch of training things. And then essentially like when you get into C Z M, that's a little more specific. So I think, uh, November 12th was more like an intro into your role as planning commissioners. And then as, as we move forward, getting into more specific items that you folks review.
Okay. And Chair Lindsay?
My question, um, is were the South Miami Community Plan meetings held later in the evening so that more people could come? Or is it just?
Generally speaking, yes, because that's more of a community process versus like these specific permits.
It was also due to, most of them worked.
Yeah, the working.
Yeah, the actual committee worked.
We want everybody's voice, so.
Yeah, I'm planning, yeah. South Miami Community Plan was partly in the evenings to catch all the people who work all day until five o'clock or whatever.
Well, I'm just wondering about taking the time.
So evening time, switching them? Okay, which would give us four hours, four hours to do this. Okay. Not on time. We have 40 minutes before we need to start our South Miami Community Plan meeting. So. Which is not here, which is in, uh, buried in One Main Plaza. Yes, so can we decide this in like 12 minutes? Or else we'll have to defer this whole thing. Which maybe we just take a stand. And, you know, one thought is to stay with December 10. And then we have like a truncated timeline for receiving all the materials, which may put us in less than two weeks from the meeting. But if we don't have too much other, yes, there's not any other like giant project to have to review, maybe that's okay.
But I think that, I, I'm just thinking for Thanksgiving is the 28th.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure of other people's schedules and all that flexibility, but it could potentially give us one week.
Yes. Yes, which we have had. Or else, yeah, we push this to January and then we have a more breathing room. So it sounds like maybe.
And order us to mediation in the interim?
Yes, yeah, 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 I'm getting there. Yeah, okay, so what if we push this to January? First meeting in January, which is the.
14th.
14th. Yes. And then we say, this is up for discussion. Okay, so if January 14th is our hearing date, then we have our, um, witness list and exhibit lists two weeks before that. Just like December 30th?
Carolyn doesn't mind.
Which is basically giving us a week because.
I would propose December 9th.
Okay.
That gives then a week for any response, and then three days for reply. And then you have ample time to be able to do what you need to do. And that should set us up to be able to have the holidays. You have the holidays free.
Pre-hearing motions.
Yeah, so you mean pre-hearing motions, not the witness and exhibit list?
Right.
Okay. So pre-hearing motions can be by December 9, which means responses would be due by the 16th. And then replies would be due by the 19th. And then, exhibit lists, for the other one, we said two weeks ahead of time. Which would put us.
Christmas Eve.
Well, at like.
Christmas Eve.
Or New Year's Eve. It would be New Year's Eve.
So, right.
So we could say Monday, the 30th?
That'd be documents, exhibit lists, or exhibits, exhibit lists, witness lists.
Correct.
That's okay with us.
And then, um, yeah, that's that. Next question is, are we allowing for discovery? Which I think I've heard no. Okay. Commissioner? Yeah. So everybody jive with this so far?
Um, so the Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Dicos.
So the not including discovery is maybe more of an explanation? Is it the timing not enough?
Um, I guess it's not entirely the timing from, based on everything I've heard, there's nothing that we like need out of the discovery process that isn't already available within the public record, within all the submittals that all the parties have given to us thus far. Like there's nothing outside of all of this that is necessarily, um, relevant to the decision that we need to make. Because like the, the, like to your points, you know, the history of all the permits, that's all public record and within all the submittals. We'll have somebody from the planning department present for questioning. The only other one is the question of, you know, somebody from the state, which it sounds like we might can't necessarily.
I guess my, my only concern is, is figuring out what the decision making process was. I think there's, there's potential that, well, people that were part of that are not available. So we have to go based on the, the written text. So I don't know if discovery would change that, it probably wouldn't.
Um, hold on Commissioner Dicos, from my understanding, which Mr. Bill, my, my understanding from Mr. Bill Berry is like the planner who worked on these permits will be present at this meeting. Like the one who put forth the approval for the director to sign will be here before us for questioning. So like the person who actually hashed through the project will be available to us.
Okay, and there's no potentials, oh, that director, he's not available, that director's not here to answer questions.
I don't know that we could require that.
No. I, look, I guess, um, I'm just anticipating how this is going to go. I'm, I'm, I'm a little concerned. I guess I'm fine. I have another request on, it's, it's related to the training. So I'll save it for, I know we're running out of time.
Okay. I guess maybe Mr. Diaz can speak more towards, um, you know, the planners' work versus the department's signature, I mean, director's signature.
Again, this is, we're sort of in kind of a contested case hearing. I don't want the department, who again is a party to, you could have this clarified at some point. I, 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 I get that. But if he says something, I don't want the intervenors or department or, or applicant to, not interveners, the appellants, to have issues and say, hey, I want to ask him follow-up questions on that. So that, that's my only concern with, with that. Now, I, I, I mean, an option you could also, if you think this, there's an issue with this discovery request or you don't have enough information, you could deny it and have another deadline to submit a discovery request that the chair could review, like you did in the last case, uh, that's more specific, if that's what you want to do as a potential option. That still doesn't resolve the sort of timing issues necessarily, but you might have a better idea. Again, that's putting it on the chair who already has a lot to do with the last item. But I think it's possible if you are, have issues with this request to say, deny that and allow for a deadline to resubmit, um, to the chair. But that's just a suggestion as well. It, it's possible. You don't necessarily have to, you're looking at a specific request and you can say, is, we're going to approve this request or deny it? And then I don't know if your thoughts on any future discovery motions, what those are, um, if you want to have a deadline for that. So just noting that.
Commissioner Dicos?
You know, and just to point out some of the concerns, like for example, you know, a question might come up, why, if there was no intent to have them rebuild there, why have them do a $2 million project versus just a half million to remove the prop? So I think there are questions that, you know, that will be asked to try to understand the, the thinking in issuing this permit that, that we may not get answers to those because folks aren't, aren't there. So I have some, you know, I think.
Oh, hold on one second.
Masterminded this whole thing is going to be available to testify.
Did you hear that?
Yeah, and I know exactly who you're speaking of and I, I have high regard for them.
Do I?
I mean, some of the concerns that the appellants raise, I, I've had those concerns for a long time. So I, maybe the appellants can address any issues with, with denying, uh, discovery. And if they're.
Okay.
Things available, okay.
Yes. Ms. Saki?
Thank you. Um, just briefly, could we at least be able to subpoena, or maybe the, um, maybe the applicant will agree? Can we subpoena the A O A O president? And, um, we may want to also subpoena a coastal erosion specialist, Chip Fletcher. And I just want to also raise, when I said we're okay with, um, talking about settlement, we don't have money to pay for mediation anymore, so that might be a consideration. I mean, I think we could still talk about settling, but we can't really afford to keep paying for mediators. Thank you.
Know what, I'll check with my department about covering their share.
Thank you. Okay, it sounds like we may not be arriving at a decision today and we need to get to our next meeting. and we need to get to our next meeting. Um, terms of options, otherwise I can get charged with taking care of this outside of this body.
That sounded like a question mark.
It really sounded like an offer.
Nice try. Um, but I mean, yeah, that's, that's an option, but, um, that can all be delegated to you if you like. I don't know if that's adequate compensation. Or you could defer to your next meeting, um, as a potential option to finish it up if you, if you need to. Those, those are, I think, your options. Um, uh, or, I mean, yeah, I don't know if you have time to craft anything before the next meeting. You could also try to finish it and defer the next meeting if you think you can finish this in a little bit, but, um, those are your options. You can always defer this to the next meeting. Um, of course, that pushes back the schedule again. Um, or you can have them, have the commission delegate all of these decisions to you. I think, yeah, so that, that's an option and have the parties, I guess you have another meeting, like another prehearing conference ending with you and just the parties. That's a possibility, but that's if the commissioners are okay delegating these decisions to the chair and the chair's decision on them would be, would be final if you delegate that. So that's also the issue there. So, um, yeah, those are, those are options.
Okay. Commissioner Lindsay, followed by Commissioner Ward.
Um, is a choice that we could approve these dates and decide defer that decision that is hiccuping Decos till the next meeting.
Discover the decision on the discovery? Um, I guess you could, but again, if you wait another two weeks, or I guess you could defer the decision to the chair on the discovery, but I mean, that seems to be the one you're debating at this point. So you'd be giving the chair the decision on whether and under which scope to allow discovery. You could also deny this motion and say you have to submit a more specific motion as to the subpoenas and discovery you want and have the chair rule on that. So, I mean, you could do that too.
That was going to be my suggestion is we defer, but request a specific details for it. Um, so that way it's not all put on you because that's going to be a lot. Um, but I think that we've put the dates out that at least everybody involved is aware of the dates. So I think going into the next meeting, we can make a decision and not lose time on the schedule because everybody, unless everybody disagrees, I think we have agreement that the timelines we've kind of established are agreeable.
And, and to the extent if the, there's a couple of key witnesses, the intervener said, I don't know if they could talk to those people and see if they'd voluntarily come to the hearing date as, as well and won't have to do subpoenas, maybe not, and then you have to do subpoenas. But I don't know if that's a possibility as well.
Um, okay. Well, it sounds like
So we need a motion?
I think so. You want to try, take a stab at a motion?
Um, I move to
Go ahead. We're trying to approve parts and then defer parts. Okay.
I'll, I'll start with dates.
Okay.
Actually, you had the dates.
Uh, yes.
I was just confirming them.
So hearing date we're talking about is January 14. Yep. And then, um, the exhibit list, witness list, et cetera, would be due on December 30. Um, the, uh, let's see, non-discovery, prehearing motions, response, motions would be on December 9, with responses due by December 16 and replies due December 19.
Can I do a so moved?
Sure. Well, but then, or I guess it would be separate for what is getting deferred or no? Please.
So you set those and then defer action on the others and not take action on the others until the next meeting?
With the others being the question of discovery.
Yeah, I suppose you could do that, but then those dates and all might change depending on what you do at the next meeting. I'm not saying they would, but you know, you, 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 if you want to do that, go that route, I suppose you can. But, um,
Well.
Yeah.
So that everybody has an idea, so nobody's caught off guard.
That was my
Yes. We could say then defer, um, decision on allowing for discovery to our November 12 meeting. Um, with the understanding that if discovery is allowed, deadline to file discovery-related motions would be a week or two after that.
You could decide that upon your
I, yeah, I know. I'm just putting it on the radar. So nobody is caught off guard.
And the only other thing I would add is that we would like any, um, witnesses if they potentially want to have in advance for them engaging them.
Yes. Any, yes. So specifics on the motion for discovery.
And we'd want that by
Well, by our next meeting.
You want to advance those?
Yes. Oh, well, that would be like a week from now.
So would the fourth potentially be feasible?
Yeah. So this is two motions or one? Um,
That would all be one motion and then the second motion would be to defer.
Okay. So what first motion? Yes. Okay. So first
Can you include the mediation order?
Oh, sure. Would you, that will be part of your motion?
And, well, I was going to say, and potentially allow the chair to deal with any, uh, non-dispositive motions between other than discovery, which you're going to do at the next meeting, um, on, on, on this, uh, on this matter.
And we're going to add the electronic.
Oh, yeah, the email service. Yep.
Can we just copy the other? And the order of mediation.
Okay. We need dates around mediation?
Um, I guess we need some details on mediation, that the, the, the parties are not ordered, but you, you want the parties to go back to, the parties will, yeah, encourage to go back to mediation, um, and, uh, I guess report back on mediation efforts. Uh, I don't know, by the next, uh, by the next meeting, you said that was the November 12?
Is that enough time to get the money from?
I was going to say maybe by December 10, we could report back to you.
Okay.
Okay. I mean, you'll be back on the 12th presumably to talk about this discovery issue some more too. But yeah, that makes sense. It wouldn't necessarily be enough time to give a final report on that.
Okay. Okay. So you got all those dates down?
Yeah.
So then
Um, yeah.
Okay. So the motion that could be set forth is setting our hearing date deadline for exhibits and witness lists. Um, non-discovery, prehearing motions, responses and replies and entering into mediation, um, email service for everything and allowing the chair to take care of what it can.
So moved.
Okay. Uh, so moved by Commissioner Ward, second by Vice Chair Thompson. Any discussion?
We've had it.
Okay. Commissioner DeCoste.
Just for discussion, I appreciate this. This, I'm a West Maui rep. Quarter of our coastlines have been fortified. We've lost two and a half miles of beaches because of decisions that we're about to address. So it's very important and I want to quote Commissioner Thompson, we want to make decisions based on good information, factual information. We want to be well-informed. So that's, that's all we're, I hope we can do that as we proceed. These are, is going to have huge impacts on West Maui and South Maui on how we go forward on this. So we just want to embrace valuable trust in good information. So I appreciate this, this commission, uh, supporting all that. Thank you, Chair.
And thank you. Thank you, Commissioner DeCoste, for being a voice for our shorelines. It's very important. Okay. So, um, call for this vote. Understanding we will have another motion to follow.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Ward?
Aye.
Commissioner Lindsay?
Aye.
Commissioner DeCoste?
Aye.
Vice Chair Thompson?
Aye.
Chair there.
Aye. Okay. Next motion regarding, uh, discovery.
Uh, so I move to defer discovery discussion to our November 12 meeting.
And we want to hear from the parties at that meeting on, um, specifics.
I thought you were, I thought we were asking for those earlier.
Um, yes. We need a date, the filing date we had for that was November 4th. With responses to follow. Uh, we need to set a time date for that. Three days?
Um, just so you folks, it's like, um, election day is November 5. Um, keep in mind, you know, just I'll throw this out there, a lot of these dates are kind of around the holidays. Staff may or may not be here, et cetera. So.
Okay. See, we are at Okay. So we have three weeks until our next meeting.
Correct.
With one holiday in between.
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Well, I guess the question would be is how quickly can the names be provided to us? Maybe we go that direction versus us picking a date.
Mm-hmm. Commissioner Lindsay?
I was considering leaving this decision up to the chair.
Okay. Um, well, I would, I would, I, yes, I appreciate that. I think this being, well, in honor of Commissioner DeCoste, um, feeling the gravity of this particular item, I would want to be able to include him in the decision. He is our resident expert.
And you're asking the dates for, um, discovery submission?
Yes. Ahead of, ahead of our meeting on the 12th.
I mean, I don't need a lot of time to know this topic very, very well, but for my fellow commissioners, I, I think, um, yeah, what do you think is reasonable, the week before?
The, yeah, the last item, we gave them one week from this
Yeah, that sounds reasonable to me.
Yep. Okay. So that would put us at the 29th. And then I think they get time for response.
Time for a response and then a reply if possible.
Okay.
So I mean, yeah, that's, that's, again, you're going to make the ruling at the meeting, but you're going to want to hear the arguments from the parties on it. And you can, I guess, develop that further. I mean, you've got some broad discretion in discovery here. If it's just, uh, yeah, you could
Okay. So we could say by the 29th and then they get a week, um, to respond and then three days to reply, which would be by the 8th.
Correct.
Chair, I'm sorry, this is Bianca. Could we stick with your, um, November 4th date? We're just, um, we have that big hearing on the 31st and we'll have a better idea of what we need after that.
Oh, okay.
And I mean, your, your, um, your rules provide that you can have, like, I mean, people, H2 filed their motion four days before, three days before your hearing. So, um, and oppositions are due only within two days. So I don't, um, see any prejudice to the parties. The rules have been the rules.
Um, okay. Do you feel okay with that?
We're actually only deciding on the 12th. We're accepting discovery. So
Yeah. Yep. Okay. So 4th. We'll see by the 4th?
Thank you.
Okay. And response, three days thereafter is the 7th?
Correct.
Okay. And hopefully reply by the 11th.
And the 11th is a holiday.
Oh, dang. Two holidays. You said there is only one.
Oh. Government.
Okay. Well, I guess it is what it is.
But, but if they're responding on the 12th, at least if we have it by the 12th, we could at least enter the meeting.
Yeah. It would be kind of like what we had today where we got something in the morning up.
Yeah, it's not ideal, but
Less than ideal, but we can roll with it because we're awesome. Okay. All right. We really got to get going. So is that enough of?
So moved.
Okay. So moved by Commissioner Ward. Second by Vice Chair Thompson.
Okay. Call for the vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Aye.
Commissioner Lindsay?
Aye.
Commissioner DeCoste?
Aye.
Vice Chair Thompson?
Aye.
Chair there.
Aye. Uh, motion carries. Can we defer the rest of the items?
Yes. And really quick, um, I know the three o'clock agenda has our One Main Plaza room at 6:19, but I think it's basically for Dale because we don't have too much room in there. So if you folks could join elsewhere besides
Okay. What about Commissioner Ward? Because you probably can't make it home in 15 minutes, right?
Um, I can get home in 20
Safely.
25.
Safely.
20, 25.
But we won't have quorum until you arrive at wherever you're going.
I can dial in from the car.
Okay. Does that count?
Can we defer for 10 minutes? I mean,
Yeah. Or can we start the meeting? Well, I guess we can start whenever you get to your house.
I mean, I can get there fast. Don't worry.
Okay. Safely.
Safe.
Safely.
Hey, I did not come with an injury.
You can fit in there.
It's awesome.
Okay. So just a note to everybody who may be watching, um, that meeting's supposed to start at 3, but we'll start whenever we have quorum. Um, the county budget meeting for South Maui is starting at 5:00 PM. So anticipating that there's probably going to be some people who want to attend that meeting from the very beginning, we will cut off our South Maui community plan meeting at 5 o'clock.
Let me get going.
Okay. Um, so we'll see everybody in a few minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your time and patience today.
Very much, thank you.
And your stamina.